Welcome to Half Moon Bay City Council Meeting, February 20th, 2024. May I have our roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marbeck?
Here.
Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
We stand for a pleasure of allegiance, please. Thank you. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favors, aye?
Aye.
Proclamations or presentations? None. I want to share with you that we have office hours at City Hall every Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00. You need to reach out to Maggie Rodriguez. That will be meetings with me. We can meet in person at City Hall or somewhere in town. Last week, it was our first week with these office hours, met with two residents from Half Moon Bay. So, thank you. Yes, you need to reach out to Maggie Rodriguez for the appointment. And you can find that on our website.
Maggie's email is mrodriguez@hmbcity.com. Rodriguez with a Z.
Do we have any reports from a recent closed session?
Mayor, council, the council has not met in closed session since our last meeting. Nothing to report out.
Thank you. City manager updates?
We do not have any city manager updates tonight.
Thank you. We move on to our public forum.
I don't have any speaker cards. I'll give it a second to see if we have any public comments on Zoom. Not seeing any hands.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve that consent calendar?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinances or public hearings? None. Resolutions and staff reports? One to 3A?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will provide an introduction to this item. And following just some brief remarks, we will actually receive a presentation from the North Peninsula Chapter of the ACLU, who has been working on some issues around ALPRs for several years now. Following their presentation, we will receive a presentation from Captain Albin from the Sheriff's Office. Just by way of background, first and foremost, an ALPR is an automated license plate reader. It's a technology that can be put into fixed locations or affixed to a vehicle or a trailer. And what it does is it scans license plates and uploads that information to a database that can be used to cross-reference for criminal enforcement activities. It's a pretty widely-used technology and something that the city explored in 2019 at the request of our sheriff's captain at that time. At that time, we heard several concerns about privacy and protection of the data that would be collected and concerns about how that data might be used. And at the same time, the state auditor's office was doing an evaluation of ALPR use throughout California. And we, at that time, the council decided that it wasn't a technology we wanted to pursue, that we'd wait for that audit to be completed and then potentially revisit it. The audit was, there's information in the staff report about this, but the audit found that although the technology could be effective, there were concerns at that time about policies being in place at those cities and whether or not those cities were following those policies. So it was an accountability issue. And then, of course, COVID hit, and the city's focus shifted, obviously, to addressing the COVID crisis. And we didn't revisit it at that time. Earlier this year, during our, this fiscal year, during our priority-setting session, it came up as an item that we would potentially want to revisit. A lot of time had passed, technology had changed, and some of the activities on the coast and issues with crime had changed here. And the council asked staff at an appropriate time to bring this back as an issue to be discussed further. So tonight, that's what we'll be doing. There is no decision-making tonight. Tonight is an opportunity to hear updates on the technology from both staff and the sheriff and the ACLU, for the council to hear from the public, and ultimately for the council to decide if they want staff to do further work, further analysis, and bring back costs and recommendations in the future. So that will be our focus tonight. And with that, I'd like to invite the ACLU to please join us. And I think the, you're already on? Can you hear us?
I am, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. And Captain Albin's going to come up and run the presentation for you. So as you want to shift through the slides, just say next slide.
Yes, will do. All right. Thank you, City Manager Chai Dester. My name is Beth Von Emster, and I'm a volunteer co-chair with the American Civil Liberties Union North Peninsula Chapter. The ACLU represents about 4,000 members here in San Mateo County, and we promote and defend civil rights and civil liberties here in the county and in Northern California generally. I'm a nearly lifelong San Mateo County resident and a frequent Half Moon Bay visitor. We think the installation of automated license plate cameras would be a poor choice for the city. They're a menace to our privacy, they're subject to mishandling and abuse, and they're not particularly effective. Next slide, please. Our well-being and privacy are threatened by these cameras. It's very well documented that the cameras tend to be placed in neighborhoods that are lower income, occupied predominantly by people of color, and in areas already overpoliced, regardless of the crime rates in those areas. The cameras don't just capture the movements of people engaged in criminal acts, they capture every single vehicle movement of every law-abiding resident who passes by every single time. In fact, 99-plus percent of those images are the comings and goings of innocent people. I'd urge all of us to imagine a camera at the end of our street. They're not subtle or hidden, you'll notice, at least I do when I've seen them. They're going to capture you, your family, friends, everyone you welcome into your home, every single time you come or go. Now imagine there's another camera near your kid's school, or doctor's office, church, grocery store, or place of work. You're a law-abiding resident, yet you have no choice whatsoever that your movements are captured, or those of your family member, or your young teen driver. And then each movement is stored for a year. If that makes you uneasy, you're not alone. The psychological harm of surveillance technology on communities has been well documented. Next slide, please. To give you a sense of the scale of the data being scooped up on regular people, according to an Electronic Frontier Foundation study of 200 law enforcement agencies during a two-year period, as just one example, the Sacramento Police Department scanned over 116 million license plates with a .1 percent, just one tenth of 1 percent, hit rate of cars potentially, or vehicles, pardon me, potentially involved in a crime. Next slide, please. The data from these cameras is subject to mishandling, mistakes, and abuse. Misreads have caused multiple innocent people to be pulled over, hauled from their cars at gunpoint, and handcuffed, including here in the Bay Area. For example, in Walnut Creek, a black man had this happen to him when he and his wife had their kids in the car. Incidents of misuse of camera data by law enforcement employees numbered in the several hundred during a two-year period, according to an associated press investigation, and included reports of stalking ex-romantic partners, business colleagues, neighbors, and journalists. A lot of humans would have access to this data. Every abuse incident is a surprise, right? No one expects it to happen at their law enforcement office. Misuse by entire departments also is well documented. The Marin Sheriff's Department just settled a case in 2022 for sharing its data with federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE. It's important to note that the data would not be stored in Half Moon Bay. It would be stored at NICRIC, which is a regional intel facility. And the data is only as safe from breaches and abuse as the integrity, competence, and policies of that organization. And storage there means a multitude more humans who could make mistakes with the data or worse. Next slide, please. A cost-benefit analysis weighs heavily against these cameras. These systems are costly in both dollars and to our rights. They're also not especially effective. In one study out of Alameda County, car thefts actually increased after the cameras were installed. The cameras have an astonishing misread rate, more than one-third in a study by the Vallejo Police Department. Liability risk is an additional cost for the city to consider. When a camera misreads a plate and officers act on that by detaining an innocent driver, the city could be liable for the resulting harm to the survivor of that encounter. And one final note about data. I've mentioned several studies here tonight indicating that the cameras are not good for our community. I'd also propose that you ask the Sheriff's Department for more of their own hard data to give you a better understanding of the risks. When the Sheriff's Office ran a camera pilot program in Half Moon Bay last fall, did the cameras result in any actionable intel? How much data on the comings and goings of ordinary residents did it collect? Where is that data now? What other law enforcement agencies besides the Sheriff's Department had access to it or continue to? And how long was it kept or will it be kept? And last slide. I leave you with just one additional point. The Menlo Park City Council just declined these cameras. The Santa Cruz County Sheriff has been vocal in saying he doesn't want them. This council's decision to decline them in 2019 was wise, and it would be wise to renew that decision now. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I think we'll, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, can we hold questions till after all the presentations are done?
Yes, is fine.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. But Beth, please hold on the line in case questions come up later.
Will do.
Captain Albin?
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I know some of you probably didn't just come to hear me talk, but I appreciate your time. Anybody that doesn't know me, my name is Rebecca Albin. I am your police chief here in Half Moon Bay. And I'm going to give you a slightly different outlook on license plate reading. And with that, we will start. So for those of you that don't know what a license plate reader looks like, this is pretty much what they look like. You may have seen them in other cities or towns, or even other places around the county. The Sheriff's Office, we have them almost everywhere else in the county, not in Half Moon Bay. And you may not even notice them before, and now when you're driving around and you know what they look like, now you'll see it and say, oh, that's a license plate reader. This picture gives kind of an indication on what the visual is that the license plate reader takes. I think in the previous presentation, there was a lot of talk about cameras everywhere and getting your kids' faces and so forth. That's not what this technology is. This specifically takes a picture of your rear license plate. It gives the color, make, and model of the vehicle as well as the license plate number. And, you know, unless you were hanging out the back window looking backwards, we would not be able to see your face because it's just getting the rear of the vehicle, as you can see in the picture. There is a lot of fear, I feel like, around what license plate readers do. What they do is they recognize your license plate. They gather objective evidence and facts, like what we just saw, what kind of car it is, what the model is, what the color is, what the license plate number is. They do not scan your face. One thing that the ALPR does is it will have license plate information inside the brain of it, of people that have done some bad things that we may be looking for. Alternatively, maybe people that maybe need help, like if you're missing and your spouse reported you missing, and we have a license plate number associated with your vehicle. It can assist us in finding you and offering you help. We use it as an instrument to solve crimes, and we adhere to all state laws, one of which is that it will not be used for immigration purposes. That is state law, it is also Sheriff's Office policy. So that is absolutely not what this tool is meant for. Again, it's not for facial recognition, it doesn't scan your face, it's not tied to any personal identifiable information. We're not using it for traffic enforcement, it's not a red light camera. And per policy, it is not stored beyond 30 days. After 30 days, it deletes. This is our policy, and I know personally that it's true because when I went back to look at information that other license plate readers that we have in the county had collected, it only went back 30 days. So I couldn't go back for months and give you statistics because at 30 days, it disappears. The footage is owned by the Sheriff's Office, it's not owned by the Flock Company, it's not owned by NICRIC. Again, we have it for 30 days, and then it disappears. This short retention period ensures that we're not holding on to data that we shouldn't have, and once it's gone, it's gone. The data is stored securely in the cloud, just like so much information nowadays is. If we are using it to search for some reason, we need to have a case number and a reason so that way there's an audit trail. We can't have people going in and looking for no reason, or for illegal reasons, or for ex-boyfriends. It doesn't work that way. You have to write exactly why you're in there, and you have to have a case number associated. Again, like we've already covered earlier, it's not predictive policing, there's no personal information that's contained in it, it's not used for traffic enforcement, and we definitely don't give it to any private parties. We're not selling it to private companies, we're not giving it to Carfax, we're not giving it to the DMV. This is specifically for law enforcement purposes. Just to belabor the point, we're not sharing it with other states, we're not using it for immigration purposes, we're not using it to deport anybody, we're not using it for things that are illegal in other states that are legal here, to catch people, to send them back to where they came from. None of this is true. The way that this technology prevents and eliminates crime is that in real time, it gives us alerts. Again, if it finds a plate that's associated with somebody that's missing, somebody that committed a crime, a vehicle that is believed to have committed a crime, it will alert us. And as a result, it's a deterrent to crime. It allows us to have eyes where we would not have them. As good as my deputies are, we cannot be everywhere, it's a very large coastline, we cannot be everywhere at all times. And this is an enforcement tool that assists us in doing our jobs better and keeping everybody I provided just a couple of examples of different ways that this is helping already in other communities. Again, I feel like sometimes people think of license plate readers and think that it's just to find stolen cars, which it does often do, but there are other ways that it is useful because so many things that happen, whether they be crimes or just suspicious incidents, happenings every day that involve vehicles without necessarily being a stolen vehicle. So I have a couple of examples of that. February, not now, February of last year, in Cathedral City, there was a suspect in vehicle information that was to do with a hate crime at a Los Angeles synagogue. And inside of an hour, they were able to capture the person that had done it because the vehicle was captured on a license plate reader. Anybody that's been to Southern California knows how many cars are down in that area, so that's pretty amazing. And it took somebody that was crazed and armed out of the community and kept that community safer. This one is a little closer to home, in the city of San Bruno. They had five suspects that committed a smash-and-grab at a jewelry store. They were chased away, but thankfully, the suspect vehicle license plate was identified. They were able to enter that information into the Flock system. And San Bruno PD was able to get a real-time alert that the suspects were coming back, locating the suspect and their vehicle before they could commit another crime. We had a missing juvenile. Again, I've mentioned that though we don't have license plate technology here in the city of Half Moon Bay, we do utilize it on the greater coast, in the unincorporated areas. We had a younger teenage girl who was reported missing by her parents in the city of San Mateo, and we were able to use the Flock system and the license plate associated with the vehicle that she had last been seen in to locate her. Unfortunately, she was found with several gang members, one of whom was an adult, again, she was a juvenile. And as it turned out, the adult had an ongoing relationship with the juvenile, and that individual is placed under arrest for the inappropriate relationship with the minor, and we were able to get that young girl back to her family safely. And that was here. We also had a number of bike thefts, e-bikes that had occurred all throughout San Mateo County, including the coast side. And as it says, detectives utilized the Flock system to use, to put the suspect's vehicle license plate, and they were able to apprehend that suspect and get a number of those bikes back to some very happy people. We are almost done, but I did want to include some stats from some cities that are currently using ALPR technology, and again, offer a slightly different view. I don't feel like it doesn't work. I feel like there's a lot of examples in our own backyard in our own area that, you know, have had much success with it. In the city of Morgan Hill, since installation in 2021, officers have used Flock Safety LPRs to make over 200 arrests in connection with almost 700 criminal offenses. Burglaries are down 36%, and catalytic converter thefts, which is something that everybody experiences, no matter where you live, are down 66%, which arguably, I think both of those are pretty good statistics. The South San Francisco Police Department, similarly, auto burglaries down 80%, motor vehicle theft down 50%. I just spoke with their chief earlier today because I believe they're coming up on a year of having it, and he could not be happier with the results that they've seen. He told me I could share a story with you of something that happened just in the last couple of weeks. They had a mentally disturbed individual that went to a church they had in town with an automatic rifle and couldn't get in, and so he started shooting at the church. Thankfully, the only people that were in the church were the people that worked there because an hour earlier, there had been a funeral and it would have been full of families. Nobody was hurt, thank God, and the individual took off. Within about 10 minutes, the license plate associated with the suspect's vehicle was captured on one of the ALPR in South San Francisco, and they were able to capture this individual and get him off the streets. He was definitely having some issues. He believed that God was punishing him, and that was why he went to the church with the firearm. So that is obviously not somebody that you would want to have in your community, and definitely a win that they got him off the streets so quickly. Venetia PD, over 100 arrests in two years, helped by the ALPR technology, recovering illegal firearms, narcotics, stolen vehicles, again, the catalytic converters, and a 12% drop in violent crime since they had their ALPRs installed. The question was posed to me, what are the statistics? How do we know that this really works? A national study was conducted, and the And the statistic that came out of that study was that 10% of the reported crimes the United States Flock Safety devices are involved in. And typical agencies that get an additional one Flock device per sworn officer, just one, may experience a 9% increase in clearance rates, meaning 9% more of their cases are being solved than they would have had they not had that technology. It was explained to me about 1 in 10 crimes in the United States are being solved with the use of ALPRs. For perspective, every city in San Mateo County, with the exception of Menlo Park, Broadmoor, and Pacifica, already have ALPR technology. And in April, Pacifica is going to be going before their council and asking to approve a contract for ALPRs. There's a number of other cities around the Greater Bay Area that all have them, but I felt like it was relevant to share right here in San Mateo County, you know, how prevalent the use is and how successful the use is. One additional piece of technology that we're not going to be talking about today, but I did want to mention, is there is something called a Condor that they make. A lot of our downtown businesses here on Main Street, I know, have expressed wanting to have some type of camera technology. If at a later time, this is something that we want to talk about, this could be something that would provide them an added layer of security when suspicious people walk into their businesses or more often than not, when overnight their business gets broken into. And they come in the morning to start work and realize that their business has been broken into. And by then, it's been hours later and they don't know who did it. And, you know, unless somebody happened to see it, we have no evidence. And so something like this, we would be able to go back to the time and look and be able to see exactly what happened. And so I just want to include that just as something to think about for the future as additional technology that could help our community members. And with that, that is the end of my presentation. I want to thank you all for listening to me. I know that there's a lot of feelings on either sides of this. But I truly do believe that this would make the community more safe and it would be advantageous for us to be able to have this technology in our community. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you both for the presentations. Council members, any questions? Clarifying questions?
I do, actually. Do I leave it up or do I minimize it? Do you want me to just leave it up?
I can take public forum first.
Should we do public forum, public comment? Paul Grigoryev?
Well, you've got my name and number and it didn't take a license plate reader. Yes, I am. I'm revealed as Paul Grigoryev. I live here in Half Moon Bay. And some of you will remember that I was one of the most vocal opponents of the license plate reader scheme when it first appeared here in 2019. I spoke at length and emotionally to you about the potential problems with misuse of the data. That's my big concern. I was surprised to hear from the ACLU that 0.1%, 1/10 of 1% of the 116.23 million scanned license plates turned up a car involved in a crime. That means that, my goodness, 99.9% of the observations were of innocent individuals or cars that were not involved in crimes, like my car. That's a big concern to me. A bigger concern, what is NICRIC? Can you tell me what NICRIC is, ma'am?
National, I would have to Google it.
Northern California Regional Information Center.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a, an association of law enforcement agencies in the Bay Area that share certain types of information.
And that's where our data is going to be stored? At NICRIC?
No, it's not. That's, I don't know.
What is NICRIC's role in this project?
I'm not sure why they said that. Again, in my presentation, it's in the cloud.
Well, I suggest that council should get to the bottom of this. Some...
No, no, I blinked on it.
Some acronym of a regional agency was described as the agency that controlled access five years ago. I think it's probably still the case. And they can't let anyone into this database. It's all well and good to say there's an audit trail that is supposed to be established, but apparently it can be easily avoided. And people who work for NICRIC can easily get around those audit trails. Five years ago, ICE was the biggest user of the NICRIC database. The biggest user for immigration enforcement. Now, I believe I saw in the staff report that the sheriff has said that she will consider closing down ICE access. But I don't think that's strong enough. We have to be absolutely sure ICE is not going to have its way into this data. And just in general, it seems foggy. Who is going to control the access to our information? I would like an answer and a firm commitment from whoever it is to protect the security of the data for the residents of Half Moon Bay and the entire coast site. I don't doubt that the readers have had an impact here and there and on occasion in solving crimes, and I think that's a valuable benefit. But you have to weigh that against the 0.1% hit rate of, shall we say, criminal cars or cars involved in criminal activity. I ask you to weigh that carefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Matt Allen?
Good evening. Hey, Tom. I came out to voice my disapproval for adopting this plan to install cameras. I do not wish to trade freedom for a 1/10 of 1% decrease in crime. And it always starts out a trade for our safety, but it never stops there. This is just a part of the totalitarian tiptoe. It will be used for other projects as time goes on. I believe it's a bad idea to track and trace the law-abiding. No deal. No, thank you.
Thank you. Kristalyn Gee?
Kristalyn with the Coastside Chamber. I just wanted to share a personal story with the license plate readers from when I worked at the Chamber in Carmel, California. As was pointed out, unfortunately, our downtown businesses have been hit multiple times over the last year with burglaries. And although many of the businesses have cameras on the exteriors of their shops, not every shop has gotten to the point where they have an exterior camera. And so one of the things that was really poignant about the break-in at Nano's was that cameras were able to catch the thief getting into a car, but it was not able to catch the license plate or see the direction that the car went in because it was out of view of that particular camera and the next camera was too far away. So how that relates is when I worked in Carmel in 2017, I believe it was, we had a very high-end purse retailer in Ocean Avenue. They were kind of at the top and they had a lot of windows. And they had become the target of a retail theft gang out of LA that kept coming back every couple of weeks and breaking a window and stealing thousands of dollars' worth of bags. Almost put this retailer out of business, as fancy schmancy as they were. With the help of strategically placed license plate cameras that were only located at very specific intersections of Highway 1 and then where Ocean comes in and a few other main streets came into Carmel. So they were not in neighborhoods, as was mentioned in the ACLU presentation. They were able to use the timing to locate what they believed was the license plate. And a year's worth of investigative services led the Carmel police to the gang in LA and they broke up the entire gang's whole system, just based off of that one usage. So it does work and Captain Albin did point out one on our very own coast side and they're already here. So on behalf of our downtown retailers, we do believe that at minimum two or three cameras, one at either end of One in Maine and the one at Kelly in Maine would be truly beneficial to helping curb the increase in crime that has been happening on Main Street and to those shops and has caused them a lot of monetary damage. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolina?
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Yo quiero hablar por parte de la comunidad latina.
So I want to talk on behalf of the Latino community.
Y por muchas de las personas inmigrantes que estamos aquí.
And so also for a lot of the immigrant people that are here.
Quisiera que por favor no nos usen a nosotros como excusa para no querer poner cámaras.
Please don't use us as an excuse to put up these cameras.
Si migración nos quisiera deportar fuera a donde da las licencias que ahí pueden tomar el banco de información y saber...
So if immigration wanted to, you know, deport us or anything, they can look at our license plates and find out all of our information.
Ahí se pudieran dar cuenta de cuánto inmigrante tiene licencia que no tiene papeles.
They would realize how many immigrants actually have a driver's license that don't have documentation.
Así que nosotros no deberíamos de ser un obstáculo para eso.
So we shouldn't be like an obstacle for that kind of thing.
Además, vivimos en un lugar que es un santuario.
So we also live in a place that's a sanctuary.
Donde muchos inmigrantes tenemos la oportunidad de estar aquí libres.
Where a lot of the immigrants actually have the opportunity to be here freely.
Y trabajaron estamente.
And honestly, work.
Así que no veo ningún motivo o que nos usen de excusa para no poner las cámaras.
So I don't see any reason, you know, for us to be used as an excuse for these cameras.
Si el estado quisiera deshacerse de todos los inmigrantes, lo pudiera hacer.
I think if the state wanted to get rid of all of the immigrants, they would be able to do so.
Así que yo personalmente como madre de familia estoy a favor de las cámaras.
So personally, as a mom, I am in favor of the cameras.
Principalmente porque nuestro pueblo se está viendo afectado por muchas malas situaciones.
And basically because our town is being faced with a lot of bad situations.
Ya tuvimos un tiroteo.
So we had a shooting.
Sabemos que hay muchas personas que se encuentran psicológicamente mal.
We know that there's a lot of people that psychologically are not well.
Nuestra juventud se está perdiendo.
We're losing our youth.
Nuestra juventud no quiere hacerle caso a la autoridad.
The youth don't want to listen to the authorities.
Querer corregir eso no significa quitar nuestra libertad.
And so to try to correct that doesn't mean that our liberties have to be taken away.
Déjenme decirle.
So let me just say this.
Si uno anda haciendo las cosas correctamente...
If one would do correct things...
No tiene nada que temer.
There's nothing to be afraid of.
Mi pareja...
So my partner...
Le han roto dos veces sus ventanas por robarle sus herramientas, su ventana de su carro.
They've broken in twice to his car to steal his tools.
¿Qué se puede hacer? Nada.
What can you do?
Ni una de nuestras calles tiene cámara.
None of our streets have any of those cameras.
Ni siquiera las calles principales.
Not even the main arteries.
Es absurdo.
It's absurd.
Estamos supuestamente avanzados tecnológicamente en este país.
Supposedly in this country, we're technologically advanced.
Por qué no hay algo que nos pueda hacer justicia con eso?
So why isn't there something where we can receive justice from that?
¿Qué estamos esperando? Que nos secuestren un niño?
What are we waiting for? To a child to be kidnapped?
Que se roben un niño de la Hatch que vaya caminando.
That a kid from Hatch all of a sudden is kidnapped.
Que secuestren a una muchacha que vaya para la high school.
Or maybe a young teenager that's going to the high school also kidnapped.
Nuestra juventud no tiene protección de ningún lado.
There's no protection from anywhere for our youth.
Y cuando las personas se oponen a esto, me hace pensar a mí.
And so when people are opposed to this, it makes me think.
Que tienen miedo, cometen delitos o pasa algo.
Are they afraid of something? Are they committing some kind of crimes?
¿Quiénes son mis vecinos?
Like, who really are my neighbors?
Seguido hay tiroteos aquí.
Often, there's shootings here.
De jóvenes que pueden andar una arma.
From youths that can have a gun or an arm.
Que andan navajas.
With switchblades.
No sé qué pensaran si uno de sus hijos fuera acribillado en la calle.
I don't know what you guys would think if your kid was stabbed in the street.
No queremos eso para Half Moon Bay.
So we don't want that for Half Moon Bay.
Se supone que somos gentes decentes.
Supposedly, we're decent people.
Que aquí viven personas que pueden vivir en armonía.
That supposedly people here can live in harmony.
Sin importar raza, sexo, religión.
Without any importance to creed, religion, sex.
Se supone que aquí todos somos buenos vecinos.
Supposedly, we're all good neighbors here.
No entiendo por qué debe de haber miedo a la cámara.
So I don't understand why there should be any fear towards those cameras.
Si a mi hijo lo paran la policía.
So if the police pull over my son
Y anda en malos pasos.
And he's going about, you know, wrong directions and they take him.
Que se lo lleven preso para que pueda pagar por sus delitos.
Let them take him away so that way he can pay due time for the crime.
Que aprendan que si no andan en buenos pasos, tienen que pagar la consecuencia de eso.
And that way they can learn that if they're not following in good steps, that this is what would happen.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias. No more cards. We have a...
Carolina Adyung?
Thank you. It was interesting to hear Carolina speak. Thank you, Captain Albin. Sheriff's Department is doing a great job, but you can't be everywhere at once. And like Carolina, we are law-abiding citizens. And I do not fear this technology. I don't have a guilty conscience. If I'm going to the store and the camera picks up my license plate, so be it. I'm just going to buy groceries or goat food at the Half Moon Bay Feeding Field. So I see it as a widespread aid for law enforcement purposes. Extra tech surveillance gives me a sense of well-being. So I have a few questions. I don't know if you're able to answer them, but will these all be mounted on the bumpers of sheriff's cars or will there be some fixed if the city chooses to deploy them? And I was going to ask how many communities on the peninsula are deploying them, but it looks like almost everything. So people that have guilty consciences or are suspicious of this technology better never leave home because everywhere you go on the peninsula, they're going to catch your plate. Anyway, how many are already being used on the unincorporated midcoast? Because I did hear they were going to fund those. I don't know if they've already been deployed. I've seen the CHP just sitting in front of the tunnel sometimes when I come home via Pacifica. And I always see them just sitting there and I, it dawned on me when I read this report that if they're mounted on the bumper of the car, they can just be scanning for criminal plates. So I still, I think that's a good thing, too. Because I know they found a dead body on Devil's Slide one time at Gray Whale Cove. And there have been plenty of incidents here on the coast, but a lot of times, it's not the locals, it's the people that are coming here to take advantage of the shops that they can easily break into or to do crimes over here from other counties, quite frankly. So I'm just wondering, I have seen license plates that are made of paper and I'm wondering if these things can capture a fake license plate also. So I'm in favor of these and... a little bit of a paranoia about your whereabouts being recorded, but I personally like the extra sense of, um, security, knowing that there's not that many sheriffs deployed on the whole coast side, the whole entire day or night, and these can help. Thank you. But if you could answer my questions about, uh, paper license plates and if they're going to be fixed or moving on bumpers of cop cars, that'd be interesting to know. Thank you. And how many do you have already on the midcoast?
Get her questions answered. She needs her questions answered.
Thank you.
Do me a hand.
No more, um, no speaker. Council members, any clarifying questions, comments?
So could you please, uh, answer Sid Young's questions about the county and, um, whether they're fixed or mobile?
Uh, the ones that, that we would get here would be fixed. They can be, uh, they can be added to already existing infrastructure like light poles or, um, really anything that's already here. Um, if, if we want to put them in an area that there's not already something that you can affix it to, uh, then a pole or something, um, can be placed there so that you can have the device. And yes, we do have, uh, select patrol cars that do have the technology, uh, roving, if you will, on a, on a patrol car. Was there, she asked something else too, right?
Where are they located in the county so, so far? Or planned for? Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, they're in everywhere else the sheriff's office is. So Portola Valley, Woodside, Millbrae, San Carlos.
Sorry.
I think she meant unincorporated.
She was asking about midcoast.
I apologize. Uh, we have one on the north coast, the unincorporated north coast. Um, that's the only one that, that we have pretty much all the time. And then, uh, as needed, you know, as some of you know, we had one in the Pillar Cidos neighborhood, uh, for a time, which we do not anymore. Uh, we employed one in the Moon Ridge neighborhood. Um, and, and so we have some that we're able to deploy for a particular reason and then, and then move around somewhere else. Was there something about paper plates too, I believe?
Yes.
Like if somebody had a fake license plate on their car?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean, as we saw in the, uh, one of the slides, you know, it does take a picture of the license plate, whatever it may be. So if it was a paper plate, it would take a picture of the paper plate. Um, you know, if it said, you know, like John's Used Cars, I don't know that, you know, we would be able to trace that necessarily. However, if we got a report of, you know, a similar looking vehicle that had a paper plate that said John's Used Cars, I have to think that that would still be useful. So is that, I feel like, I don't know if she's still here. I think that was the question.
Yeah, and I have my own question. Um, so looking at your policy, I do see the 30 days retention policy, but later on in the document, it talks about, and I think what it's referring to is data that's been downloaded because it's associated with an investigation, but it talks about being up to a year.
Yeah.
And so I, I needed clarification on that because that concerned me.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, so if, for example, we recorded your license plate, you're a law-abiding citizen as far as I know, um, in 30 days it would disappear. Uh, the only reason that it would stay up to a year is if it were associated with some type of criminal activity and there was some active investigation going on. And so that's sort of the, the, um, the timeline, if you will, to get that investigation done. And it says up to a year because, you know, investigations, it's not like television where it's all resolved in an hour. It can take weeks, it can take months. And so that's kind of that wiggle room, um, to conduct the investigation. Uh, but for the majority of people, 30 days disappears.
Mm-hmm.
Question or comment, which?
Uh, question, comment? Either one.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank you, Captain Albin. I believe that the, uh, feelings of the community have been, uh, positive since your, uh, installation here and I, I really like that. Uh, I've only heard good things, but I believe that the same arguments that we had five years ago about the inappropriateness of the ALPR still holds. Uh, I think the 0.1% uh, solving rate is probably, uh, overestimate. And what really concerns me is that every vehicle gets tagged, uh, law-abiding, not law-abiding, uh, immigrant, not immigrant. It's, it's just a way that, uh, the state can intrude unnecessarily. So I'm concerned about the, the way the information is, could be available. I'm not saying it will be, uh, but you know, uh, if we talk about the trade-off between, uh, solving crimes and, uh, individual rights, it seems to me that individual rights win in this case and I don't want to spend city money on installing these devices. Thank you.
I'm going to be commenting too.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, um, I have to say there are arguments on both sides and, um, I personally feel that there is too much access to my personal information via the internet right now. I don't want to give up my privacy. I don't want to give it away. Um, I've already given it away by just being on the internet every day in, in many ways. But what I've seen is the ability of individuals to hack that information. Um, if I, if I shop at Nordstrom's shoe rack for the next year, every time I go to Facebook, I'm going to see ads from Nordstrom's shoe rack because somebody out there knows that I went and looked at a Nordstrom's shoe rack ad. Uh, I hate it. So I hate this invasion of my, my privacy. Um, I'm not personally threatened by theft. So far I've been very lucky. I've had one incident and a, actually a camera in a restaurant was responsible for finding the perpetrator of that. The sheriffs here were right on it. They, they got my bag back to me, uh, within 24 hours. So there are times when it's useful. My sense is that there are two issues here. One of them is how do we protect our downtown merchants? And I think that's critical. And I think if the downtown merchants want license plate readers, cameras, what, the, the, the Flock, what do they call them? The LPRs, whatever, whatever they want, I think we ought to have that. I think that we owe that to them. So, um, I agree with Chris Lynn's, um, comments. Strategically placed cameras to protect downtown merchants, I'm in favor of. Anything beyond that, I am fearful of. And, um, I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just fearful of it and I would like much more information before I, I agreed to, to endorse it.
Council member?
I, I, I agree with council member Penrose. I'd like to have more information and direct staff to gather more information. I know that different cities approach it in different ways. I'd like to understand what people are doing. Uh, I just read Palo Alto's ordinance and policy. They have a privacy policy. They have a, um, a policy relating to surveillance equipment of, of all kinds. They did extraordinary outreach to the public and then developed an ordinance and a contract with Flock that looks to me to be very, you know, protective. And they actually spent a lot of time working with the ACLU on, on their final product because, let me just say, I really appreciate having the ACLU and the Electronic Frontier Foundation working these issues. Their job is to advocate and their first priority, of course, is to say no. You know, don't do anything like this. But they understand that there are, you know, realities on the ground and that people are adopting these. And so they've developed guidelines and a couple of different choices about how to handle retention and all that stuff. So, um, they're actually willing to be helpful to define, you know, safe and better ways to do this. So I think we need to, to look at that too. I just want to point out that if you go into Ocean Colony for any reason, whether you, you know, work in a garden there or clean somebody's house or you're visiting someone there, a camera at the front gate takes a picture of your license plate and that's a private entity. We don't know how long they retain that information, who they sell it to or what they do. But if you're going into Ocean Colony, your license plate is being captured. It's a private system. If you're going over to Costco in Foster City, your license plate is getting captured. If you're crossing any of the bridges without fast track, your license plate is being captured. You're already in the system. And what concerns me is with everybody in the peninsula having these cameras, and they will be in the unincorporated county as well, by saying no, we're creating a gap in the network. And that gap could attract people who know that we don't have coverage here. You know, just like in the old days when Half Moon Bay was allowing bootleggers during prohibition because it was remote and people could come over here and do bad things. You know, having a, a white space, if you will, in the network is not good. It's going to attract people and make things worse. So, um, I, I, you know, I'm totally in favor of privacy. I hate the way we've become as a society with, you know, our genetic data being hacked and all this stuff. Um, you, you recently approved a database of landlords that could be hacked. Um, I think we just have to look at the realities on the ground and look at, you know, a data-driven approach that might give us, you know, the protections that we feel we need for our community rather than just outright saying no on principle. You know, we have to keep our community safe and just making decisions based on principle, you know, isn't enough as far as I'm concerned. So we have to do our homework here before making a final decision. So I would ask my fellow council members to join me and directing staff to bring back more information and we can send the staff, you know, messages about the kind of information we'd like to see. I think we should do more outreach. Maybe we need to start with a surveillance policy, you know, and then use that to build in our, uh, contract if we want to go forward. But to just say no, I think does not serve our public well. So that's where I'm coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Um, just one bit of information. So council member Arback said, I don't think we should spend any city money on this. So just to clarify, my understanding is that, um, what's called COP grants would cover all the costs of these cameras. Council member Arback said that would just be for the first year. Is there any more?
Uh, no, I mean, one of the things i- if we're directed to go and, and do more research is we'll actually work with Flock to start to identify where, based on the data, we think these things should be placed and then we can develop a cost. If the cost is, is reasonable, we have COPS grant funds. It's a grant that we get every year from the federal government, um, that could help cover the costs of these, um, not into perpetuity probably, but, um, for, for a period of time, more than a year, but we're not sure how long. It's really going to depend on how much these cost.
Right. Okay, thanks for that.
So that's part of the research we could do if we're directed to do so.
Right. So, um, yeah, well, I agree with my fellow council members. I would want to ask staff to really check into the Palo Alto, um, process of regulating that. And I didn't know that Palo Alto worked closely with the ACLU on those, um, regulations. And Palo Alto is a pretty progressive community, um, where I think a lot of like-minded people would be concerned about their privacy rights being intruded on. So, and it's great if we don't have to start from scratch in terms of drafting those regulations if you've got great models from a place like Palo Alto. Um, you know, I can't help but agree. I mean, I understand not wanting to give up your privacy, as you said, but I think that is so compromised these days, um, much worse than these cameras. They're in stores, they're in private stores, they're pretty much, um, everywhere, unregulated. So stores have cameras not being regulated at all. At least this is regulated and, um, in 2023, the state passed regulations from the attorney general that information shared with ISIS, um, is prohibited and there'll be, um, prosecutions if it's shared with ICE. I'm not saying that it couldn't still happen, but, um, I think the fact that this equipment could be leased, we don't have to keep it going, we could test it out. I love the idea at least having it downtown, seeing how that works. I'm not hearing lots of stories locally or in any of these communities on the peninsula of information being compromised. Um, I'd be interested if the ACLU has more stories from these peninsula cities of that information being compromised and people being arrested because information was shared with ISIS. Um, that Sacramento statistic about less, one tenth of a percent. So those were cameras over two years. I don't know how long ago it was. It was 116 million cars, unless I did my arithmetic wrong, which is possible, but I did use my calculator here. One tenth of a percent of 116 million cars is still 100,000 cars involved in crime. So it's not reducing crime by a tenth of a percent, someone said. It's capturing 100,000 cars that were involved in crime. So, um, you know, just keeping everything in perspective and, um, getting more information as to the guidelines about, um, information being shared and then weighing it against the public's interest, um, in reducing crime. Unfortunately, when I read next door, I think a lot of the public is very concerned and sometimes that concern is misplaced by, you know, you see a couple of crime reports and then think it's happening everywhere. But, um, I think the sheriffs have done a pretty good job in the last couple of years of addressing crime. This sounds like a useful tool, but I'd love, like my other council members here, I'd like to hear more information. Um, look at some of those model cities like Palo Alto and then come back and let's, um, make some well-informed decisions, which may include just starting out with some cameras somewhere, you know, not putting them everywhere. And frankly, if the unincorporated parts of the county are putting up cameras and, um, I'd be interested in more, you know, what, where those cameras are. Cause when we looked at this five years ago, we were talking about having cameras at the entrance and exits to the city to capture folks, not on every street, not. So I'd be curious if even that exists and how we feel about that versus having them, you know, everywhere. So, um, I think there's a lot more pieces of information to gather. Thanks.
Thank you. Actually I have several questions. One of them is about, you know, the cost effective of having the cameras in, in our, in our community. We can have actually more information about data about, uh, the last three years, uh, of the crime reports, uh, crimes committed, uh, what would have been the use or the benefit of having cameras to take those, uh, activity happening? One of the reports, uh, it says, it says that, uh, the camera can actually misread the license plate. Is that true?
Well, I mean, I, I suspect that anything is possible. I, I don't know exactly what that is in reference to, but my thought would be like when any of us have been behind a car and they have maybe like a license plate frame that's covering like, you know, the top, so maybe a, or the bottom. So maybe a E looks like an F. I mean, that's my understanding. I think that's probably what it means because that could happen. Um, and I think as much as we rely on technology, there is a human element to it of, you know, us reviewing. Um, and in that instance, you would, you as a person, a higher level thinker would see that and realize, oh, it could be an E or an F. Or, you know, maybe a one that's an I. So, you know, I, I don't think it's like a science fiction movie where, you know, they're completely. where, you know, they're completely changing the license plate to try to get some innocent person in trouble. I think it's something like that that is, you know, an error, but that would be sorted out through, you know, the human element.
That, to me, is a concern. Misreading a license plate on the example that we saw about the family where the husband was taken at gunpoint and handcuffed in front of his children, that is concerning. I mean, it could escalate to, you know, worse than that. So that's a concern of mine. The other thing is, you know, you mentioned on your report that actually people that are electric bikes were photographed and their electric bikes were actually recovered. So this is not, we're just not talking about cars. We're pretty much talking about everybody.
No, it was a vehicle that was associated with stealing the bikes.
Oh.
So they got the license plate.
Somebody riding a bicycle and got a photograph.
Yeah, yeah, no. We got them and then we got the bikes back.
There's just a, I'm still not convinced, you know, that we need cameras in Half Moon Bay. I would like to see more information, learn from other communities, and compare the crime reports, you know, before the cameras were installed and after the cameras have been installed and how they work before, you know, I can actually make a decision. So getting information right now, to me, actually thinking about having cameras in Half Moon Bay, I'm considering that to be more like a Band-Aid, you know, like a quick fix. I think we need to do more work than having a camera that's going to save the community. You know, I do agree that when we see something happening in our community, you know, everybody panics. But when everybody panics, then, you know, we want a quick fix. We want to fix that right now. And I can't really make a decision based on that. I understand, you know, about what's happening with our children. Most of the incidents, the shootings that have been happening, young adults, the street fights, young adults. You know, there are some adults that are also doing, you know, inappropriate things, and I'm all for catching the criminal. You know, if a camera is going to help us, you know, catch a criminal, somebody is actually hurting somebody, I'm all for it. But again, you know, I would like to see more information about how that will, the city will benefit from, you know, having cameras installed, even if it's at the South Main, Highway 192, or, I mean, I don't know about downtown. I believe, you know, there's a lot of businesses downtown that already have, you know, they already have cameras installed that could actually benefit from that. But I think I'm not ready to make a decision, you know, on approving something like this. I would like to have more information. Like I say, maybe looking to other communities that have used this system for several years and to see what is the benefit of the system, you know, to actually to eliminate or to reduce, you know, crime activity in their, in their community. Councilmember Branson?
I heard your point about looking at cost-effectiveness, but I'd like to just throw out another metric, and that would be the amount of risk we're willing to tolerate. Are we willing to tolerate a school shooting? Is it worth it to spend the money on a camera to avoid a mass school shooting? Some of us would say yes. So I think, don't just look at it in terms of cost, you know, cost efficiency. Look at it in terms of the amount of risk you're willing to tolerate in terms of your public safety. I think that's a really important metric. Are you willing to protect one person's privacy and, you know, potentially create a situation where there could be a school shooting and, you know, we can't find the person and they go on to commit another crime, you know? So think of it in terms of risk as well. That's what I would say.
Question on the school shooting. Would they, would they approve to have cameras on campus at the school?
Well, I mean, I don't work for the school district, so we would need to ask the school district.
So that's another question. If we're concerned about school shootings, then it means, you know, the camera should be in school grounds to protect our children, to protect our students. And that's definitely something we can look into about benefits of other communities that actually have these cameras installed on school grounds, colleges, high schools, elevens, middle schools, and downtown communities. I understand, I would like to see more reports about what's happening in our downtown community, retail stores, restaurants that are being broken into. And of course, working with them to implement a system like this, it's a decision that we have to, yeah, we have to make as a community. So I think we need more information. But like I say, you know, I, I do, I am concerned, you know, for the safety of everybody in Half Moon Bay, the coast. But again, it's, it's not just me making a decision. We have to, you know, listen to our community and about, and sharing information and showing information of the benefit is something that we have to do.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
I can give you a little piece of information. I live in the community that has the Pilot ALPR installed. It was recently removed. It's my understanding that it captured exactly zero crimes. And I'm not surprised, but that just reinforces what I think that in terms of the price-benefit relationship, this is not the way that Half Moon Bay ought to go. Menlo Park agrees with me, by the way, and that's a pretty progressive community. They have agreed not to have ALPR, so that's another data point.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, I think that when we're talking about communities and community health and community safety, the question should be placed to the community. Do you want cameras in your community? So if the community where you live, Harvey, if everybody was, was asked, do they want a camera there before the cameras were put in there, that might make them more useful.
I can tell you that at the meeting that was held, the neighbors absolutely wanted more cameras. And based on that, the sheriff's office installed an ALPR on Pillar Cito Avenue.
Right, and the fact that nothing happened might have been due to the fact that it was made public. The cameras were going into the neighborhood. So use your head and don't go in there and do any bad things. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't think that's a vile, a good argument. I do, however, think that if a community wants cameras, then they should have them.
So. Well, I was gonna, well, probably the same thing. So Menlo, I'd be interested if staff can also talk to Menlo Park. Obviously, they're a neighbor of Palo Alto. And whether or not they studied Palo Alto's situation and how they may have had a different opinion would be interesting. In terms of metrics, Captain Albin listed, you know, about 10 different cities showing 40, 50% reductions in robbery, stealing car parts. So I'd like to see, I mean, that's a metric around reducing crime that has, you know, that pays off. Obviously, the more people found out that they were going to get caught on these cameras would probably reduce the crime. I think more statistics are like that or great. We do have some metrics like that. So if Captain Albin could share those with us and we could have a look at that. And that's it. Does staff have enough direction at this point on proceeding?
Yeah, would that be possible to get some data about our last three years, some of the crime reports of the last three years, to see what would benefit? And maybe look into other cities that actually have implemented this program and look into the crime reports, even though you already showed some of the, sorry, on your report, but would like to see more? Would that be possible?
No, absolutely. I mean, I can, I could get you as many statistics as you want. I'm, you know, happy to report that most of the communities, if not all, that, you know, have this technology are so happy because it's done so many good things, like the cities that I talked about in my presentation, that it's not hard to find people that want to share their good stories about how it's made their community safer. So I can absolutely do that. And as part of next steps, it sounds like, the plan would be to look at existing crime data, crime analysis, bring the Flock people in, look at the geography of Half Moon Bay, identify what crimes are happening where, and not target any particular communities by who lives there or, you know, where they were born. It's not that. We look at the downtown business district where we've experienced, you know, businesses being broken into. And we say, could this technology be helpful here? Where are the strategic locations in this area that would help curb this? We do the same thing, whether it's where Harvey lives or, you know, anybody else's neighborhood, to say, is, is there something that is plaguing this neighborhood that license plate technology could assist with? And then when we come back to you, I can give you three years of statistics and I can bring facts from other cities. And we can also come with a map and say, these are the locations that strategically, for these reasons, makes sense to put here. What are your thoughts?
That would be, that would be perfect. I think that that information would be very valuable for our community, you know, when making it. I know we are a split decision about having cameras for various reasons. But I think that information would be very valuable for our community to understand, you know, the benefit of having cameras. And if you could do that for us, that would be great.
I'd just like to add, so I'd like to know, you know, how much of our crime is actually perpetrated by outsiders? You know, we're a tourist community. We know that there's quite a bit of, you know, criminal activity involving people coming from the outside. How much of it is coming from the outside as opposed to, you know, locals committing crimes? I'm guessing on balance, it's outsiders. But it would be helpful to actually have that data and understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, even amongst ourselves, we can think of the issues that we know about. Cars driving like.
Beaches, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Certain streets with beaches that the people that live there are bothered by people that don't live here, that are driving crazy, that all have vehicles with license plates. And instead of the next morning, the neighbors being so frustrated because they got no sleep because of the cars doing things they shouldn't be doing, now we have a method to be able to say we know exactly who did it and stop it hypothetically.
And I just want to point out, too, that, you know, in a system like this, it becomes more effective the more players you have. Like, you know, crime is often regional, right? I mean, the catalytic converter thefts, all this stuff. So in a region like, you know, the peninsula, if most of the players are part of the system, you get more, more data and it's going to turn up more crime and more successful adjudication of those crimes. It's a network, right? So it's not just individual communities. It's sharing that information as a peninsula, as a region. So I think we have to keep that in mind as well.
Thank you for all that. I think we have direction to continue to explore this technology. Again, reminding the audience, there's no decisions being made tonight. This was a first step to kind of gauge the interest that the council and the community have. The direction is clear that we want to continue to explore this. So we will do this work and we'll bring it back. I think we've talked a lot about data, about the efficacy of these and the impact it can make on crime. As someone who's spent a lot of time as an analyst, I do want to just caution folks, statistics from the ACLU or from the sheriff's office, from other cities, there's causation and correlation. And it's really, really hard sometimes to identify, is the implementation of a technology the cause for a change? Or does it correlate with a change? And I will say that most of the time, there's a little bit of both. As Captain Albin said, this is a tool that the sheriff's office would like to use along with a lot of other tools. It's not an end-all, be-all. But the hope would be that the implementation of these, to this technology, along with other practices, could help to reduce and solve crime on the coast. So just, that's always an important reminder for everybody that statistics can't always be taken right at face value. You have to think about a lot of other factors. And I think if you talked with the folks that Captain Albin has been talking to, there's other factors as well that they've been doing, and we need to be thinking about those as well. And some of the stats we heard from the ACLU, there's other factors that need to be considered and not just taken in a vacuum. So we will pursue those statistics about efficacy. I also have heard an overarching theme, just in general, about concerns about data and privacy. And it's interesting because, as has been stated, we all make decisions every day to give up our privacy, whether it's out of a feeling that we can't get around it or convenience or other reasons. We trust information being put out there all the time. And for whatever reason, there seems to be a distrust of government having access to information. So I think the other thing that we as staff need to do is double down on making sure that we've got the right information and policies in place or sample policies that could go along with this to help, if we decide to move forward with this, ensure to the best of our ability that data and privacy are protected and that information will not be used for the wrong purposes. You know, Mr. Gregorov was right. Four years ago, when this was presented to us, it was presented that the NICRIC, which is this regional group, had control of this information. I'm not sure right now exactly how that's managed. I think Flock and the sheriff's office can help us understand that. I think that's an important question to answer, is what is their role? And if they have a role, does it mean that somehow our data and our privacy is less protected? So I think that's the other piece we need to bring back. And then, of course, we'll bring back some cost estimates because cost has come up a couple of times. We have a funding source for this, but we still need to be thoughtful about how we use those funds. So I'm not sure how long it'll take. It'll probably be at least later in March or in April before we can bring this back. But I think this is an important issue that we need to now take the steps to dig in on and bring back the right information for you to make decisions on. And it sounds like maybe pulling the businesses and residents of our community might play into that as well.
Matthew, if we don't use this funding source as COPS Plus or whatever it's called, is that money be available for other?
Yeah, we have a good pool from previous years. It's an ongoing funding source we get every year, and it can be used for a variety of supplemental law enforcement and public safety purposes. And so if it wasn't used for this, it could be used for other things, and it continues to grow.
I think that's an important distinction because I can imagine a lot of better uses of the money than what we're talking about here.
Captain Albin, just any other thoughts? I know you've worked very hard on this presentation and working with the sheriff's office and Flock on this. Any parting words?
I would just say that we don't have to do it, but we do have somebody on the Zoom from Flock that probably could explain, if you wanted to hear. That could explain exactly how the information is.
Managed and shared. Is that something you want tonight? Or would you rather us bring it back as part of more comprehensive? Okay.
Okay, absolutely. You know, then in that case, I just really appreciate all of you being thoughtful. I think that, or I hope that when we come back, I'll be able to have answers that satisfy everybody. And more than anybody, I definitely want to listen to the community members because at the end of the day, this is something to make everybody that lives here safer, you know? And we're not Big Brother. I don't want to force something on the community that they don't want. I do feel like a lot of the community members have shared with us that this is something that they want. But I hope that we can all, we can all get there together. So I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll follow up and to next time.
Thank you. Thanks, Captain Albin. And thanks to Beth from the ACLU for joining us, and I'm sure we'll continue to work with them.
We're gonna take a five-minute break before we get to the next item. See you at 8:35. 8:37.
It's two minutes slow.
Welcome back. We're gonna move on to item 3B, minimum wage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are joined online by Lisa Rossi, our Admin Services Director, who is out of town, but is joining us to help with this item if needed. And Brian Lopez, who's a senior analyst in our office, he's the lead on this project. Unfortunately, he caught an illness over the weekend, and we made a decision that we would allow him to call in and answer any technical questions, but we didn't really need to have him come and join us in chambers and expose us to any illness. So thank you to Brian and Lisa for being available, if needed. So I'm gonna take the item tonight and make the presentation, and they're available for any questions. A little bit of background before I get into the data. In 2020, in 2019, the council asked staff to explore an increase in minimum wage here. At the time, the state was on a track to get to $15, and city council didn't feel like it was moving fast enough. And so we did some work, and ultimately, the council implemented the minimum wage in 2020, but delayed it because of COVID and effective January 1, 2022. Our minimum wage for all businesses of all sizes went to $15 an hour. And then it's increased with the cost of living index, the CPI index, which follows inflation over the last several years, increasing each January 1. As of this year, our minimum wage for all workers in the city of Half Moon Bay is $17.01. Similarly, the county took this up last year, and ultimately implemented its own minimum wage that is also impacted by the cost of living index. And as of January 1, their minimum wage is $17.06. In both of those ordinances, the wage will continue to climb in accordance with inflation. Just for a little bit of background about what else is happening in the country, the federal government implemented the Raise the Wage Act in 2023, which, over time, will bring all workers in the country to $17 an hour by January 1, 2028. So even though that's a big jump from where they are right now, they'll continue to lag behind California and Half Moon Bay under our current ordinance. The state of California has done additional work here. Under the current laws, minimum wage for all businesses increased to $16 per hour, effective January 1 of this year. Fast food workers, under a new policy, and fast food meaning large chains with lots of workers, or franchises with lots of workers, will actually increase to $20 per hour, effective April 1, 2024. And healthcare workers will be increased to $25 an hour by January 1, 2028. If you do the math, the $20 an hour by April 1, 2024, both the county and the city, if the inflation continues, will be just shortly below those at that time. So it really will equalize what's happening here in San Mateo County. As I mentioned, our rate is 1701, and the county is at 1706. We took a poll of what's going on throughout San Mateo County and in the region, and right now, the average minimum wage for all cities is $17.51. The median is $17.35, so we are lagging behind the median and the average, but that also takes into account all types of cities, larger cities, smaller cities, cities with, you know, major corporations and lots of retail, or smaller cities like ours. The high of 2394 is, I don't remember exactly, and if we want to dig into that, Brian can fill us in. It's for a very specific group of workers, I think in Oakland. And the low, of course, is the California minimum wage of $16 an hour. Before we move on to the work we've been doing, last November, the council, at a meeting, I think we were talking about housing, and the council indicated that this was an issue that we wanted to look at again. There's a feeling that inflation hasn't kept up with the cost of living, and has not, or the inflation of our minimum wage hasn't kept up with the cost of living, and that the city should look at more it can do to help workers that are struggling, as a way to help offset, you know, increasing housing costs, and the costs of gasoline, and a lot of other goods. We were preparing through the fall to bring this item back, and by happenstance, in a meeting with a leader at the county, realized that the work that we've been doing could have potential impacts on these workers. And we just want to talk a little bit about this tonight. My job as a city manager is to get the right information to the council, so that they can make good decisions. This has proven to be really, really challenging, and at this point, we do not have the right information, or enough information, to really understand this issue. But the concern is that most low-wage workers and minimum wage workers here on the coast side supplement that income with public assistance. And it comes in many different forms. Some people get housing vouchers, like Section 8 housing vouchers, to help offset the cost of renting a home or an apartment. Many people get support with Medi-Cal or other subsidized healthcare, so that they and their families can have healthcare, which is administered through the county. Many people receive food benefits, childcare benefits, support, benefits that support their children going to college. There's many different benefits, and the sources of those benefits come from federal, state, and county sources of funding. Each of them has its own metrics and calculations to determine who's eligible. It's really, really complicated. And what we had hoped to determine is, is there a rate of pay at which people become ineligible for these benefits? You know, if a person makes a dollar more per hour, and they work full-time, that's $2,000 of gross additional income that they're receiving. At the lowest income brackets, they're probably keeping 60% or more of that. So maybe for a $1,000 gross increase, they keep $600, $700 of that. We've talked about a $20 minimum wage here, so that would be an additional $6,000 of gross income per year, probably about $4,000 of additional net income that could actually be used to support their families or their households. What we're concerned about is potentially that $4,000 of extra income, meaning they lose 5, 10, or more $1,000 a year in public assistance, putting them farther behind financially. We don't know that that's a fact, and that's what we're trying to ascertain as we work with the county. But as of right now, we don't have that information. So it's something we're working to obtain. It's something we'll continue to understand. It's very surprising that other agencies have not taken up this policy issue, because I think it's a really important consideration as we work with our vulnerable populations that depend on these resources to be able to live and work and thrive here on the coast side. And so it is something we just want to think about and consider as we talk about this tonight. At our last discussion on this in November, we were asked to gather some business demographics. The demographics we have available to us come through our business license collection, that data that we collect through business licenses. And we were honed in on some specific industries where there were a lot of low-income or minimum wage workers. And as we share those tonight, you can see that in the industries that have the highest prevalence of low-income or minimum wage workers, at least at their base wages, not including things like tips and gratuities and service charges, we're looking at about 1,100, 1,200 workers here in Half Moon Bay that are likely affected by our minimum wage ordinance. Most of them are in restaurants, and many of them work in our hotels. And then we have people working in food stores like Safeway and New Leaf. The other area that we were asked to explore was ags and nurseries. We know that farmworkers make up a big part of our community, whether they work in Half Moon Bay or they live in Half Moon Bay. According to the information we received from the business licenses, which don't take into account contract workers and other types of work arrangements, we have nine businesses in Half Moon Bay that identify as being ag, agricultural or nurseries, employing 98 people. Again, that doesn't take into account people that are brought into work seasonally on contract and other areas, but the minimum wage would apply to any of those people as well.
Matthew, I want to understand, this last column, that's the number of minimum wage workers, or what is that?
No, that's the average number of workers per business. So it's just the number of businesses, the total number of workers, and the average number that would be employed by a business in that sector. It's obviously going to vary depending on the business type.
But you don't have data as to the actual number of minimum wage?
There's no way for us to know, without being able to survey and get accurate data from every single business, how many minimum wage workers we actually have.
That's too bad. Thank you.
Another thing we were asked about was demographics of business ownership. How many businesses are women-owned and minority-owned? That is not information we collect as part of our business license process. We have worked with Crystal in the chamber to at least provide some anecdotal data. Many of our small businesses here on the coast side, especially on Main Street, are women-owned. It's much harder to identify minority-owned, because a person has to actually identify that. But there are many minority-owned businesses here in Half Moon Bay. I wish there was better data available for that. But again, there's no collection method for that, that would, unless we could get every business surveyed and answer, and as the chambers surveyed businesses, the return rate is not super high. Councilmember Reddick?
I think the state collects that information.
Like through the Small Businesses Administration?
Yeah, I'm forgetting exactly which department, but you know, having worked for a state agency, I know that we had to identify grants we were giving to minority-owned businesses, or, you know, governments in disadvantaged communities. I believe that information is actually at the state level.
We can do some further looking. We weren't aware of any of that information. I used to work on disadvantaged business enterprise, but the state requirements around that expired many years ago. So I don't know if there's a different way they're collecting, and I may check in with you to see if you have any thoughts on that. But we could certainly look at that for future discussions. We weren't aware and couldn't identify that information.
In fact, maybe Assemblymember Berman's office could actually track that down for us.
Okay. So when we started this conversation last year, the council asked staff to explore what would happen and what options were for increase in the minimum wage to $20 per hour. In our last discussion, we talked about different options, and we just want to quickly go through those again. I think we got some clarity on that, and folks understand ways that that could be implemented. It could be implemented in stages over several years, which is how we initially adopted our minimum wage ordinance. We didn't go, we did go straight to $15 an hour, but after that, it was just increased with the CPI. The way the state worked to get to $15 an hour was through a variety of means, but each year, it increased a certain number until they got to $15 an hour. So that's an option, that if we wanted to get to $20 an hour, and then look at the CPI, we could look at kind of breaking it up year over year as a way to give businesses the time to make adjustments and plan for those increased costs. Another thing that the state did, and we could consider, is differentiating between small and large business wages. And then, over time, the small businesses would catch up with the large businesses. Again, that's really thinking about the disproportionate impacts on smaller businesses, and the slimmer margins that they operate under, and would give them time to plan and prepare. Just for your purposes, when the state did this, they differentiated by businesses with 25 employees or more being large, and less than 25 being small. Another thing that could be considered is, for instance, in our current ordinance, we, every year in November, do a calculation based on the August Consumer Price Index. And whatever the difference is, year over year, we apply that to the minimum wage. So in high inflationary years, the minimum wage could be as much as, you know, 7, 8, 9%. I don't think we ever reached that, even though there were times that inflation was doing that. The CPI tracked a little bit lower than that. That can often create issues for businesses, because it's hard to plan for those high inflationary periods. And so something, some organizations have done, or jurisdictions have done, is set a cap, where it follows the CPI, but it's capped at 3.5%. And then, sometimes, another option is to do that cap with a carryover, so that over time, say, over a five-year period, maybe you've increased by the entire CPI, but it's only 3.5% per year, and then whatever's left over each year carries over, until you've reached a point where you can just apply the CPI. And then, of course, an option would be to just enact the minimum wage immediately. We'd want to consider some sort of a waiting period. Currently, we give businesses 60 days notice before we implement a new rate. Often, it makes sense to implement new wages on a fixed date, like a July 1 or a January 1. And so that's something else we could consider. That would also give us time to do outreach to businesses, and make sure everybody understands what the city is doing, and what the impacts will be to them. As far as enforcement option goes, it's been interesting. When we started meeting last year, which was three years after implementation of this program in Half Moon Bay, we had no issues, no enforcement actions, no complaints of minimum wages not being paid. We're now actively working on a couple of cases where people have made those claims. I'm pleased to report that the District Attorney's Office actually has a unit dedicated to this, and they've been extremely helpful. Obviously, our staff doesn't have the expertise. You know, we have the expertise to work with the community, but as far as investigating and enforcing on businesses that are not following minimum wage laws, that takes another level of expertise. And the District Attorney's Office has a unit that's been very supportive. They've been working with the individuals that have made these claims, and working with the businesses that the claims have been made against to substantiate and hopefully correct that behavior. Additionally, the county has adopted and will be forming a new Office of Labor Standards Enforcement for this purpose. We don't know how it will apply to the city necessarily, if there will be a cost for these services, and what level these services will be implemented. I think their initial focus is really going to be on outreach and education. But the point is, here in San Mateo County, we have some really great resources to help us do investigations and enforcement work when, if and when those issues arise. And then, of course, the state has the Division of Labor Standards, if we really have to escalate issues higher. So that's the additional work we've done. Again, I'm really sorry that we couldn't bring more on the benefits issue. We think it's an important issue, but it's an issue where the data and the information is not readily available. And our work with the county has started us in that direction, but we don't have enough information to really share with you on what a minimum wage increase might have as an impact to the community, if there's certain dollar amounts that should be of concern to us, especially based on family size, household size, family size, and the amount of work these individuals are doing. So hopefully, that's enough to at least have further discussion on, and then provide further direction to staff on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Move on to a public comment. Matt Allen?
Yeah, it's me.
Welcome back.
Thanks for the time and the platform. There we go. Once again, I disagree with the proposed idea. It's really hard on small business owners to be forced to pay their incoming, unskilled, inexperienced workers an artificially inflated amount. These minimum wage jobs are not intended to be a living wage. These are for beginning workers to- These are for beginning workers to gain skills that are more marketable and prepare them to move on to higher-paying jobs. So all it does is force business owners and service providers to increase the cost of their goods and services, which ultimately contributes to the problem of inflation that you're trying to fix. So to make it personal, I teach high school. When I started, minimum wage was about 1/6 of a first-year teacher. And due to California's intervention over the past 20 years, it's more like 1/3 now. Minimum wage is about 1/3 of a first-year teacher's salary, at least in the district that I work in, which is not Half Moon Bay, but it's comparable. So in trying to help, you're just crushing the middle class as you lift the floor up underneath the middle class. Their buying power is destroyed, and any advantage you're giving to minimum wage earners is immediately erased because everything gets more expensive. So I say, don't do it. And then, as a general comment, I would advocate for civility when making public comments and just focus your comments on your position that you have on the issue and don't use it to disparage other members of the public who you may disagree with. So Sid Young, that goes out to you. You called me silly and paranoid, and I'm neither.
Thank you. Carolina?
Muy buenas noches, otra vez.
Good evening once again.
Los siento si los aburro.
I'm sorry if I'm being boring.
Estamos hablando de un tema que nos compete mucho a nosotros los que ganamos el mínimo.
So we're talking about this topic that has to do with us that earns minimum wage.
Según el estudio...
According to some studies.
El costo de vida en Half Moon Bay es...
The cost of living in Half Moon Bay.
Es el 65% superior al nacional.
Is 75% higher than the national average.
Eso quiere decir que si nosotros vivimos en Half Moon Bay...
So what does that, what does that, so sorry. What that means is if people live in Half Moon Bay...
Necesitamos ganar un promedio...
We would need to earn, on an average...
De 46,074 dólares.
Forty-six thousand seventy-four dollars.
Y quiero decirles...
And so I want to let you know...
Que con este aumento que ha habido del 16:45 a 17:01...
From 16:45 to 17:01 with this raise.
Actualmente, yo gano al año...
So actually, I make, per year... Thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Quiere decir que no gano lo suficiente para vivir aquí.
That means I don't make enough money to live here?
O sea, si el promedio para vivir aquí es de 46...
So if the average to live here is about 46...
Yo gano 32.
I earn 32.
Tengo un déficit como de 8,000 dólares.
I have like an $8,000 deficit.
Entonces, relativamente, cuando ustedes aumentan...
So when you all increase relatively...
El precio de la vida aumenta también.
The cost of living also increases.
Tengo un amigo que trabaja en McDonald's.
So I have a friend who works at McDonald's.
No, en el de aquí.
Not the one here.
En otro que está cerca.
Another one close by.
Su patrón le dijo que le iba a pagar 21 la hora.
His boss said he was going to pay him $21 an hour.
Pero va a aumentar el precio de la comida.
But food prices will increase.
O va a disminuir el tamaño de la porción.
Or the portion size will go down.
¿Qué va a pasar cuando aumentemos más aquí el salario?
So what's going to happen if the minimum wage increases here?
Va a venir el señor que me renta.
So that my landlord's going to come over...
Que me acaba de subir 300 dólares.
Will actually just increase my rent by $300.
Y me va a subir otros 300.
And he's going to increase it another 300.
¿Qué pasa cuando yo trato de ganar más dinero?
So what happens when I try to earn more money?
Para complementar mi hogar, mi comida y vestir a mis hijos.
You know, to dress my kids, to buy food, my house, complement my home.
Mi hijos pierden medical.
Medical. So my kids will lose out on medical if this happens?
No contamos tampoco con el apoyo que ellos puedan tener de parte de alimentación.
So we don't count with the help for food that they can get.
Y al ser pobres...
And for us to be poor...
No podemos pagarnos un seguro médico digno.
We don't have dignified healthcare.
No nos alcanza el salario.
We don't have enough money.
O sea, es ilógico...
So it's illogical.
Que quieran aumentar el salario...
That they want to increase minimum wage.
Y el requisito que usted tiene que ganar para calificar para su medical.
And so in order to qualify for the prerequisites for medical...
No, no cuadra.
It doesn't combine, it doesn't mix.
Y cuando usted va a pagar sus taxes...
And so when you pay your taxes...
Le preguntan...
They ask you.
¿Cómo sobrevive usted?
You know, how is it that you're making a do...
Para calificar...
In order to qualify.
Para el bono por sus hijos.
You know, for your kids.
Si no se puede vivir con esa cantidad en Half Moon Bay.
If you can't possibly live with that amount of money in Half Moon Bay.
Hay cosas que no cuadran.
So it doesn't add up.
Entonces, de nada va a servir que ustedes tengan la buena voluntad.
So even if you have this goodwill to increase the minimum wage, it will not...
De aumentarnos el salario...
You know, to increase the minimum wage.
Si no va a aumentar la renta...
You know, if the rent doesn't go up.
Va a aumentar la comida.
The food is actually going to go up.
Vamos a perder medical.
We're going to lose out on medical.
Tenemos que pagar más impuestos.
We'll have to pay more taxes.
Entonces, no es ningún beneficio para nosotros.
So it's not a benefit for us.
Relativamente, el costo de vida va a aumentar no solo para nosotros.
So the cost of living will relatively increase, not just for us...
Sino que también para ustedes.
But also for you all.
Puede que ustedes no tengan ningún beneficio de esos porque no califican.
It could be that you don't receive any benefits from that because you don't qualify per se.
Pero necesitan ir a Safeway a comprar comida.
But you need to go to Safeway to buy food.
O necesitan también tener otros beneficios.
Or maybe you need some other kind of benefits.
Simplemente, muchas gracias.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Gracias. Crystalin?
Hello again, Crystalin, Coastside Chamber. I just have a couple of points to both, to reiterate from previous discussions that we have heard, oh, so we had done our own survey when we saw this coming. And with the exception of the four industries listed on the presentation, the businesses in Half Moon Bay that are outside of those industries are already well above 20. So they are not really affected. Their average was closer to 23 starting. We have heard from Main Street and downtown retailers especially that this will price them out of hiring high school kids and seniors as when you start inching up past what it is now, the output and skill that they need. So the person might be at the counter, but they also need them to be the bookkeeper if they're going to be paying that amount. They actually need two people for the price of one. So there are some entry levels or outro level people that will get taken out of the equation. I would also like to point out that our businesses on average, we keep calling them small businesses, and they are teeny-tiny nano-businesses. So the California definition of a small business is independently owned and operated and has business with roughly 100 employees and a gross revenue of $5 million. A California definition of a microbusiness is a business with 25 or fewer employees and gross revenues of roughly $2.5 million. Most of our businesses right here on Main Street, including the restaurants and the retailers, would not even qualify as a microbusiness. So they're teeny-tiny nano-businesses. Most of them have five employees. And then I would also like to just give a personal story in regards to the wonderful outside-of-the-box thinking that Matthew brought up into how that affects services. So about six or seven years ago, when I worked a job that I kind of roughly made somewhere in and around $35,000 a year. It was at the time that Obamacare came along, so we had to have the health care. It was $500 a month. I could not afford that. Signed up, made a few hundred dollars more than the cap and owed the IRS $6,000 a year for multiple years. I am still paying off $26,000 worth of debt from Obamacare just because I just barely made more. And it was not enough to live. And I could never, ever live with $500 in health care. So that's only one type of service. Many have many more services in that that will be adversely effective. And we don't want them to incur $26,000 in debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosio Ávila?
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening all.
Yo voy a ser muy breve porque al parecer ya hablaron.
I'm going to be really brief because other people have already said this.
Pero sabemos que la vida aquí es muy dura y con el sueldo que se tiene no es bueno para vivir porque no podemos.
So we know that life is really hard and with the salary that we make, we can't really make it.
No podemos cubrir todos los gastos.
We can't cover all our costs.
Pero como dijo el señor Matthew, la comunidad está preocupada...
But like Mr. Matthew said, the community is concerned.
Está más preocupada por si sube el sueldo de las personas. Nosotros, más bien nuestros hijos, pierden su seguro.
If the minimum wage increases, our kids will lose their insurance.
Tenemos que pagar muchas cosas y si ellos pierden el seguro médico.
So we have to pay a lot of things. And if they lose their health insurance...
Es otra carga más para nosotros pensar que no podemos pagarles un seguro a ellos.
It's another burden on us just to think that we can't pay for their health insurance.
Tal vez algunas personas pueden decir, ¿cómo no pueden pagar si nosotros?
Maybe some people ask themselves, like, how could they not pay for health insurance?
Si nosotros pagamos y nos alcanza, pero hay personas que solamente tienen un hijo. Porque hay personas que pueden pagarlo y piensan que nosotros lo podemos pagar también. Pero hay personas que solamente tienen un hijo. Nosotros tenemos tres o cuatro.
So some people are able to afford health care, but that's because they only have one kid. You know, we have like three or four or more.
Sabemos que no es bueno, ¿verdad? Pero tienen que pensar que es bueno, pero tenemos que trabajar o se tiene que trabajar con el condado o con unas personas que los ingresos los tienen que levantar para que la gente pueda seguir calificando.
¿Qué dijiste? Que es bueno, es bueno.
Es bueno y no es bueno porque...
De subir el ingreso. So it's good, but it's not so good to increase the minimum wage. I think you guys need to work with the county to look kind of more into it.
Tener más, levantar más el ingreso para que tú puedas calificar.
So just to kind of be conscientious about the increase in salary so that you may or may not qualify for health insurance.
Porque te sube el dólar, pero acá si te pasas con 100 dólares ya no calificas.
So if you go up past a certain threshold, then you may not qualify.
Pienso que es algo que se tendría que trabajar.
So I think it's something that we need to work on. That's all.
Gracias. Betsy Del Fierro?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to all the speakers. Thank you to Matt Allen and Carolina and Rosa. Gracias por sus palabras. Son muy inteligentes. I didn't think about that so much. I was really just focused on, oh, us restaurants, poor us. We're going to have to absorb this minimum wage. But what a very eye-opening topic to think about how this is going to affect our employees or all the employees who are going to be impacted by the loss of their Medicaid. That is huge, and I think that's really worth looking into. Of course, you will. We ourselves have had people that are in our employ come to us and say, would it be okay if we, if you can show that I make less so that I can apply to and be eligible for public aid, for state aid and county aid? And so it's something that's very real. And thank you for, Carolina, for bringing that up. Gracias por ese tema. Now, I'm just here to tell you a few of the impacts that we feel would be put upon us as restaurants. I'm speaking for myself, Kim Levin here from Pasta Moon and a lot of the other restaurants that I've spoken to. We have borne the brunt of the wage hikes every year. Basically, it's gone up a little bit less than a dollar since 2022, I believe. With the proper notice beforehand, we're able to prepare for that. But a wage hike to 20, I think the proposed is 20, is a little bit of a bigger hike. It's going from 1701 to 20. That is pretty huge for us. So I just really, tonight, I'm here to beg for more discussion. We really need to talk about who this is going to affect, what are the benefits to the employees that are going to be given a higher wage? For instance, in the restaurants, our tipped employees sometimes make 30, 40, 50, $100 an hour if there's a big party where they're paying gigantic service charges. So you have to understand that there's a real discrepancy between the farm worker or the retail shop person that has no chance of making other higher wages, where a tipped employee is really going to be in a position where they're making much higher hourly wages. And in some cities across the country, as you know, eastern seaboard, tipped employees are exempt from minimum wage hikes. So that's maybe something to look at. You're shaking your head, Matthew. It's what? Oh, shucks, not legal, okay. Anyway, there's a lot more to say. I hear my little dings going off, but I think more and more, all we really need to do is continue talking before we do this, guys. There's just so much to talk about. The impacts on we restaurants. I mean, we're, maybe it's hard for you to believe it, but we littler restaurants, like Crystalin said, we smaller businesses, we're not making the huge margins that some of the big gigantic ones are. We just aren't. We're just barely making it. And a lot of times, there is no profit. Thank goodness my husband has another job. Keep him working. But let's keep talking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rosa Shields?
Hello, good evening. Sorry, I was mid-dinner. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Thank you, staff, for the detailed and informative report. My name is Rosa Shields, and I am the Community Services Director for the San Mateo Central Labor Council. I live and work in San Mateo County. I live and work in San Mateo County. In my work, I encounter many people who are struggling and need assistance. As your staff report indicates, the cost of living in Half Moon Bay continues to rise for families. I see this with an uptick in people calling for basic needs assistance across all of our municipalities, including Half Moon Bay. They often need rental assistance, mortgage assistance, food and transportation help. A lot of these folks calling make even higher wages than these proposed minimum wages. There were concerns that using CPI to calculate the annual increase was not bringing the minimum wage near a living wage fast enough. And it was imperative for the council to take action to assist the struggling families in Half Moon Bay. As the Community Services Director for the San Mateo Central Labor Council, I hear from these struggling families. I hear from people who cannot survive in our county. Currently, our highest minimum wage in the county is at the airport and workers there are living in their cars or are living in apartments, 15 people to a one bedroom apartment. I support options A and B, but do not support differentiating between business sizes for minimum wage increases. Enforcement is already an issue as we have finally established a countywide O L S E after many years, but our office is already inundated with wage an hour violation and wage theft complaints. Many of these calls come from people who are monolingual, Spanish speaking and undocumented and fear retaliation from their employer. Differentiating between business sizes puts the onus on the employees to ensure they're being paid legally and equitably. How do they know how many employers, employees their employer has? Differentiating between business sizes also runs the risk for folks who are maybe on the cusp of those business sizes of being laid off or of being impacted. As staff mentioned, the state did differentiate between business sizes when they enforced their minimum wage, but with all due respect, we do not have the enforcement mechanism of the state. Again, we support options A and B to support our lowest wage workers and raise the employment standards for everyone in the city and throughout the county. Thank you for your time.
Jess Hudson?
Good evening. My name is Jess Hudson. I'm a policy manager for United Way Bay Area and I am speaking on behalf of the organization tonight. I commend City Council for its direction to staff to research pathways to a higher minimum wage and take action to assist the struggling families in Half Moon Bay. I also thank the staff for their work on this report. As an organization committed to addressing and eradicating poverty and building equitable pathways to prosperity, United Way Bay Area strongly supports increasing minimum wages for all employees to better match the cost of living. In San Mateo County, the Real Cost Measure found 28% of residents do not earn enough income to meet their basic needs. We know 35% are rent burdened. In Half Moon Bay, where the median gross rent is $2,158, a renter making a $19 minimum wage would pay $25,896 of their $39,520 gross annual salary only on housing, which leaves $13,624 gross income to afford food, childcare and all other basic needs for a whole year. We know that it takes a little more than three minimum wage jobs to make ends meet in this county. I did some quick math to check on the Medi-Cal eligibility as well. And at $19 an hour, a family of four is still under the Medi-Cal eligibility. For a family of four, eligibility threshold is at $3,450. Someone who is making minimum wage gross at $19 an hour would only be making $3,040. So they would still be eligible. Families and individuals must earn a wage that meets the cost of living to survive. This need does not reduce because an employee works for one business type over another. The current minimum wage does not differentiate between business types. Changing course to create a two tier system of wage minimums based on business type will leave some struggling families behind. Please retain the existing model in this ordinance update to best meet the need for an increased wage for all minimum wage workers. Thank you.
Carlisle Anne Young?
Hello. I was also thinking to know, on your chart, you took the slide down, but I think it said 54 or 56 restaurants in Half Moon Bay. I'm wondering how old that data is, because I've seen restaurants that are closing. So I don't know if that's taking into account all the restaurants at the harbor or if you're counting a Starbucks as a restaurant or, you know, the little Pete's. Anyway, the other thing that I want to bring up and it's, you know, neither here nor there, but if you live alone and you're on social security, you might not go out to eat very often. And I sometimes do like to go out to breakfast with some friends, but I spent almost $80 at a downtown restaurant for breakfast. It was closed for a long time and then it reopened, but you know, I can't afford an $80 breakfast for two people. So very often, you know, it was a splurge, but when these restaurants have to raise their price because they're raising the minimum wage for their workers, they also might lose the volume in customers because I've noticed all the prices going up. I still don't go out very often, but that's another factor to think of because I know food prices are going up, but the cost of the employees are going up too. That kind of explains why, you know, it's costing $80 for two to have breakfast down on Main Street. So I just want to remind you that there are people that will stop eating out a lot if there's a huge increase. Thank you. Wait, I forgot to say, I wanted to apologize to the school teacher. I was actually kind of making fun of my friends that live in Ocean Colony that said they were against the LPRs and then Deborah Ruttig said that Ocean Colony has license plate readers when you come and go. So I thought that was kind of funny, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean it about you. Bye.
Any more?
Nope, there are no longer.
Council members?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a quick clarification. I want to make sure that the folks in the audience, people listening, understand that we don't know what the impacts of a higher minimum wage might be on public benefits. As we just heard from one of the public speakers, there are calculations that can be made and increased minimum wage does not necessarily mean that people are going to lose public benefits. Simply, we've identified as an issue that we don't have a lot of information about yet and we'd like to explore further. So I don't want to create panic from folks that feel like they're at risk of losing their benefits. It's more something that we've identified as a really important consideration that we need to explore further. So.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. You have 10 seconds?
There's an interesting study that you might look into when you're gathering data and American Samoa talks about the impact of the raised minimum wage in that small community. It was a smaller group of data to look at to understand how it affects the economy.
Thank you, Matt. Council members, comments? Vice Mayor?
Barbara Lee is advocating for a $50 an hour minimum wage. I think that's too much. In the past, I had advocated for a $20 an hour minimum wage without differentiating between business sizes. I'm very impressed that Matthew has brought up this issue of potentially losing benefits if we raise the rate to $20. So I would definitely like Matthew and his analysts to come back with as good an information as possible about the effect of a $20 an hour minimum wage on workers in Half Moon Bay. I think it's important. Unintended consequences, it's pretty weird, but we need to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Penrose?
Yeah, I think in addition to finding out what the county's cutoff for medical help, for WIC, for whatever services the county offers, we need to understand what our population is. Do we have 100 families with six children? Or do we have 50 families with one child? We don't know that. So you have to look at both sides of the issue. And I thank you, Matthew, for saying, let's not scare people. That's critical. All we're trying to do here is to help and we're trying to do help, to help with as much information as we've got. I have no interest in putting a restaurant out of business. I have no interest in keeping a family from getting medical help. That's not what this is about. But it is obscene that people are living the way they're living in Half Moon Bay. Let's not forget that. That is obscene. They're living on wages that are obscene. There's no other word for it. So I'm keeping that as the most important thing that's going to influence my decision on what we do. I just think right now we don't have the information that we need and although Matt's been trying to get it, I think there might be other ways to go about getting it. And I think certainly that trying to figure out what our population is will help us to figure out how important the cutoff is for things like county help. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Ruttig?
Yeah, I agree we need more information on the benefits and it might be not just individual benefits, but you know, do some agencies look at cumulative benefits? In other words, you're getting not just your salary, but you're getting this benefit here and so your benefit in this other pot might be less because of the cumulative benefits. I mean, there's relationships between these, I think, and you know, I'd like to understand that as well. But you know, we can't expect the minimum wage to carry people out of poverty. It's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. What really has to happen, and I think, you know, we should do our part to advocate, is you know, people need better childcare, they need better healthcare, you know, if there are more robust government intervention, more robust social safety net, then wouldn't, you know, the minimum wage, you know, wouldn't be, you know, so important or your salary. We have to take care of families. We have to do it more comprehensively. So you know, we should be advocating for more benefits for our families and low income, you know, individuals. That's where we're gonna lift people out of poverty. It's not gonna be raising the minimum wage. It's just never gonna keep up. So we have to make sure that the social safety net from our state and federal governments make up that difference, just like most of the rest of the Western world does, right? We're very stingy in this country. Consequently, our institutions are in a shambles, you know, our public education system, all that stuff. So we shouldn't have the expectation that raising the minimum wage is going to eradicate poverty in Half Moon Bay. It's not gonna eradicate poverty anywhere. You know, it's not also clear to me that, you know, the economy is back in, you know, good pre-COVID shape. So I'm in favor of staying the course until we get more information and understand, you know, the context. But you know, I think, you know, we want to be careful about how fast we go because, you know, the economy's still not so great. And you know, I don't go out to breakfast anymore. I'm not gonna spend $25 for breakfast. And I agree with one speaker who said, you know, there are impacts to these to middle class people as well. And you know, teachers are under a different regime. You just don't raise their salaries, you know, every year willy nilly. They have to go through contract processes, public employees. So there are impacts to rising wages to, you know, other classes of people. And the people who benefit the most are the rich who are not, you know, their demand is inelastic. It doesn't matter what the situation is, right? They just go on and spend. But middle class people, not so much and lower income people. So it's a complicated, you know, place we find ourselves. So I might be open to, you know, more minimum wage increase. I don't know at this time, but I think from now, stay the course and get more information. And then as we look at our legislative platform, as we understand people's needs, that we do our share of advocating for a better social safety net in this county, in this state and in this country. It's not good right now.
Yeah, I think that it would be nice to think that the government would step up and do the job and provide health benefits and low income housing for our people living in poverty. That's not gonna happen. That's wishful thinking. So I think that we have to do what we can do, not wait for the government to provide better medical care for less cost, not wait for the government to come up with affordable housing that they're gonna build for us. When's that gonna happen? I'd love to see that happen. I agree with you that it's a complicated issue and that we need more information and I am definitely waiting to hear more information, but I'm not counting on the government to help.
That doesn't mean we don't advocate for it and try to make it a better world.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yeah, there's two speakers tonight who validated the concerns that you raised. So those are two voices and how much the rest of the community represented by those voices of people who can lose health benefits. And all you need is one real bad health crisis to, you know, wipe folks out or that fear that their kids can't get, that anyone in the family can't get medical care. So I was interested in that the person from United Way, it seems like they've done a lot of research, but we'd have to, well, it'd be great to benefit from that. She said $19 an hour for a family of four keeps a family below the threshold for maintaining Medicare, which of course, you know, I'd be interested, does that mean a family of four with one person working, both people working, marriage tax, you know, all that kind of stuff? So it'd be interesting just to get some more info on that so then we can gauge where we feel people in the community fall. But it's hard to get all that information from people in the community too. You know, it's, so yeah, we'll have to figure what that magic number might be. You know, is it 19, is it 20?
Don't forget CPI, because it'll go up and take people over that threshold.
Right. Depending on the amount of, yeah, taxes they're paying. So yeah, complex issue, so I'm glad we're exploring it. Thanks, Matthew, for highlighting it. And thank you for the speakers for bringing up the real life examples, how that impacts your lives. Thank you.
Any more comments? Vice Mayor?
Briefly, the idea that we should cap CPI is just insane, if you ask me. It's just the opposite. If CPI goes up, we definitely would, should react to that in a positive way. But I don't think that's really gonna be relevant. I think we're gonna settle on a minimum wage that is not gonna be capped with CPI caps. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. I heard this comment, I think it was last year, you know, somebody commented, I remember who the comment came from, but actually, the comment is, it is expensive to be poor. You know, that's, since I heard that comment, it's stuck in my head. You know, and if you look around, you know, community, that's your minimum wage, there was a comment saying, you know, the minimum wage was a starting. There was a comment saying, you know, the minimum wage was a starting, you know, pay. But we have people that have been in the same job for 20 years and still get paid minimum wage. Right? So, you know, even after the experience they had of 20 years, they're still getting paid minimum wage. So what is, I mean, it's a world that changes. I understand there's a fear of losing your benefits by the increase of pay rate. But also, there's other benefits to the increase of pay rate. First, we have to check. We have to check, you know, was a cutoff or to be able to receive, you know, Medicare or any other assistance before you lose it if you get a minimum wage increase. Let me give you an example. There's people that have to work two jobs to complement their, you know, their income. With the minimum wage raised, actually, they can stick to one job and use some of the extra time to spend with the children. That's a benefit. At one point, I was a young teacher in Half Moon Bay. I had two jobs. And I cannot raise my son at the time. I was not, I was not home because I was working all the time. From then, I went to one job that paid me better, and I was able to spend time with my son and raise my son. So there is a benefit about, you know, increase of minimum wage or increase of wages as a parent, even as a single person. There's a benefit when you get, I mean, there's all kinds of things that you get the benefit about, you know, the increase of, you know, pay rate. And that's what we're trying to look for. You know, how, you know, moving in that direction that will better serve our community to live better. It says, you know, or public health. You work two jobs, and the second job only is a complimentary income of $6,000. That's how much you will get if you work one job at a minimum wage of $20 an hour. So that means you have more time for yourself. Your mental health is better. Your health is better. You're sleeping better. There's all, I mean, I see all these benefits. But before we, before we actually make a decision, you know, I would actually like to see, you know, how this might affect, you know, our community if we increase a minimum wage to 19 or even 20,000 an hour that it was proposed at our last meeting. It was talked about, our high school students. I don't see a lot of high school students working retail or restaurants. I see them working fast food restaurants that are paying more than minimum wage. You know, it's not like before, when I was in school, that I was working minimum wage jobs as a high school student. But we have to actually look more into the families. You know, a lot of high school students have to work to, you know, as a supplement income, you know, to their parents. So they're not going to, they're going to school, not having enough time to do their schoolwork because they have to go to work to be able to complement, you know, extra income into their homes. So maybe doing the, you know, just checking with the county. Thank you for the person that reported on the, you know, the cutoff and the benefits. If they, if airport workers are making more than minimum wage that we are offering in Half Moon Bay and still having a hard time, then we have to think about our community. You know, what is the benefit of having 19,000 or 20,000 an hour minimum wage? I understand about the businesses. I do understand that. Right? But I know when we offered that the last time, I was not in city council yet, but 2019, I don't think any of the, any of the businesses that were actually concerned about the raise of minimum wage, you know, were not a business. You know, and we are, you know, who actually eats in our local restaurants? Who are visiting our retail stores? Right? So there's a lot, a lot of things that we have to look into. But I think right now, we are concerned about our minimum wage earners or low-income communities that are worried about losing their benefits. So, you know, and then, of course, at the same time, we learn about our local restaurants and retail stores about how it may affect them if we, you know, if or when we raise the minimum wage to 19,000 or 20,000 an hour. But, you know, keep that in mind. It is expensive to be poor. That's for sure. Hold on, I have a, I did a little bit of numbers. So really quick, you know, farmworkers, they don't work year-round. They're seasonal workers. They actually work 10, sometimes even nine months of the year. So making minimum wage, you know, they're not getting the $32,000, you know, a year. They're getting more like a $27,000 a year. The same thing, that's on a, that's on a $19, you know, actually, although we have 17, 17,1 minimum wage. If we go to $20,000 an hour, you know, they will get $32, you know, 32,000, excuse me, 32,000, you know, those 10 months of the year that they work at a seasonal work. So yes, keeping that in mind.
Okay, I think the direction's clear. I do wanna share, as we've heard tonight, you know, we were given a figure by somebody who clearly works in this realm and does these calculations, which we appreciate. But I think it does illustrate why this is so complex. Because that number is for a family of four. But people don't get paid based on their household size or any of those factors. So there is not gonna be a perfect answer here. I think you've given some really good direction on looking at other demographics. And I think our goal is to just understand our workforce as best we possibly can and what those households look like and how much money they're making and potentially what kind of benefits they're receiving and try to find that middle ground where we can do the most good and the least amount of adverse harm and settle somewhere there. There will not, this is calculus. There is no perfect answer. It's gonna, it's gonna be very individualized, person by person by person. And I think the goal here is to at least understand broadly how changes to the minimum wage could impact large groups of people. Is that a fair assessment? So that's what we'll continue to do. And I think right now, that's gonna be our sole focus. Of course, we'll continue to work with the businesses and understand the impacts that they're concerned about. And Betsy, I'm sorry, we researched the heck out of that issue because we understand that so many tipped workers do so well. And as our city attorney pointed out, that's something the legislature probably needs to fix because obviously, it's been addressed in other parts of the country. And I think when we talk about legislation, that's another place we could look. So we'll continue to do that work. We'll continue to update you. And hopefully, we can, part of me thinks we need to also push this issue through our state legislators. This might be something for, you know, the state, there's, what's the group in the, in the state assembly or in the senate? The finance group that does these kind of analyses on a, what is it? Yeah, the Legislative Analyst Office. I mean, this is, this isn't just us. This is a statewide issue. And what's it called?
Public Policy Institute of California.
Okay. And I think that's another thing we need to be doing is pushing for broader, you know, people that have the resources and access to data that would be very challenging for us to get. Of course, we don't wanna sit and wait because that could take years for them to do in legislation. But I think that along with the work we do, we need to be pushing for statewide, look at this. Because again, every person we've talked to, it's a surprise that this is, oh, wow, we haven't really thought about that, which blows my mind. It means that probably it's not being looked at, and it should be. So we'll continue to do that work and do our best to bring back a better recommendation for you next time. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody. So former Congresswoman Jackie Speerino has this campaign to eliminate child poverty in San Mateo County. So we certainly want to, you know, work with her and support her in that. And, you know, she is one of those people talking about the total comprehensive, you know, benefit package, especially, you know, early childhood education and childcare, which is really important for families. So we wanna, you know, track what she's doing and support her in that work, either privately or if she's elected supervisor, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maz, you want me to do this one, too, or you're good?
You're on such a great roll. No, happy to be here and do this. One second, please. This looks like an older version. There we go. All right, perfect. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I'm Maz Bozogunia, Public Works Director and City Engineer. I'm here tonight to talk about the John L. Carter Park project. The recommendation tonight before you is to adopt a resolution to authorize the transfer of $1.25 million to the capital improvements project number 611, John L. Carter Park Improvement Project, with the identified sources of funding listed in the table below. A little bit of background. I just wanted to go through the project history and how, you know, where this project started and where we are today. This was, the John L. Carter Park was identified as a community park that was underutilized as part of the park's master plan update in February of 2019. And since then, we've, the city's worked on this project in moving it forward with design and environmental. In December of 2020, the planning commission approved the CDP and SEQA documents for the project. And there was a modification, an amendment to that in March of 2021 with regards to some of the sound equipment. In December of 2021, the state came through with the Prop 68 grant. Mark Berman's office helped us secure $4.7 million, $4.75 million towards the construction of this project. And then we, the city moved forward with the award of the construction agreement in April of 2022, as well as other documents. And then unfortunately, there was some delays associated with access. And so there was some subsequent updates to the city council in 2023 with regards to those, those items. And ultimately, in June of 2023, the council authorized the city manager to move forward with the temporary construction easement, as well as permanent easement serving the Carter Park project. Before I get into the, before I get into the specifics, for folks that are listening and may not be familiar with the project, this project looks at incorporating a performance stage as well as a concession and bathroom facility at the John L. Carter Park project at the site. The renderings you see here on the screen are from the earlier concept levels of the, of the project planning. Some of the elements have changed, but just wanted to kind of highlight what the project is envisioned to look like. On the bottom right of the screen, you can kind of see a cross-section, if you will, of the park where you can see the terrace seating in relation to the performance stage and some of the other amenities that's being proposed as part of the project. Before I get into the more specifics of tonight's item, I just wanted to share some of the photos from our project, the construction that's been ongoing. What you see here is the poured concrete walls for the concession stand and restroom facility. A lot of earthwork and rough grading has been completed to date for this project as well, although there's still quite a bit of work to do. We've, the concrete pores were completed between rain events. And that's been part of the, you know, part of the challenge with some of the delays is working and continuing to make progress. And so the contractor and the city has been pushing forward to move through the construction, even with the weather breaks where we get them. So as far as project impacts, this is, I wanted to, again, to reiterate the concerns, the impacts of the access to the park that it has had on the project. When the project was going through the design and outreach phase, this was a highly publicized project. There was many community meetings, a lot of conversations with stakeholders, including the neighboring properties and commercial properties in that location. Unfortunately, during the beginning stages of the project, there was some pushback and potential litigation. And so that created a little bit of a delay with getting the project started. Then moving from there, we had the increased rainfall intensity that was witnessed in the 22, 23 winter storms. Just a quick snapshot of the rain gauge of that event, that New Year's Eve event. We had a high flow of 2,100 cubic feet per second on that New Year's Eve day, which is one of the highest recorded of the rain gauge that was installed in Pillar CDOs in 1967, I believe. And then on top of that, we had some utility coordination issues, notably with PGD. There was some location that was originally designed to be tied into for the project. And once the contractor started looking into it, unfortunately, there were some concerns. And so we had to do a little bit of redesign there. And there were some additional construction costs related to that as well. So with the opportunity that, and we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting in 2023, but with the opportunity that the delay brought, this project was a look at the design. And there were some elements of the project that were reconsidered, specifically the stage itself. We wanted to take a closer look at the foundation and make sure that what was designed can withstand these increased rain events that we've witnessed over the last couple of years and with the anticipation that these are going to be more of the norm as we move forward with climate change and the things that we're witnessing in this world. So those were some of the, some of the implementation pieces were related to that. We've modified some of the surfaces. For example, we went with a natural turf for the lawn area rather than a synthetic that was originally identified because it does better in flood conditions. We also looked at some other elements, like swapping out some of the lighting for the amphitheater seating to aquatic lighting, just making sure that it's waterproof and looking at minimizing some of the utilities of the stage itself just to make sure that we're not building something that's gonna require constant maintenance during every rainy season. But again, knowing that this site is utilized for flood mitigation during those rainy seasons. And so again, looking at trying to maximize this delay time while we have the opportunity. So from there, we've encountered, as mentioned in the staff report, we encountered unforeseen costs of a little over $1 million. And a lot of that was related to the, the actual easement, access easement and permanent easement to Carter Park itself. There was a monetary amount of over $270, a little under $275,000 related to that. With the delay in the, in the timing to get the, to get access and the project moving forward and then the impacts of the storms, there was, there was also contractor-related costs associated with price escalations with materials and labor. And then there was some slight changes to the design that was, that were, we also took, there was a cost impact to making those modifications to those project plans. And then some of the other pieces that I mentioned with the utilities, with PGD, as well as Coastside County Water District and some of our sewer systems, again, with what we were looking at, we had to make some tweaks to that, some due to our own due diligence. And then some was just related to the information that we had received during the design phase that was inaccurate with what was in the field. So at the end of the day, we are looking at overall construction expenditures. This is our best projection at this moment. Not everything has been signed off. But the construction contract for Wickman, our contractor, is at 4.9. And then we've got, we're anticipating about $915,000 in change orders through Wickman. We've also listed our soft costs with our consultants. As for a project of this size and this complexity, generally, you want to make sure you have your design team involved. We have a construction manager that's been supporting the project and overseeing a lot of the day-to-day operations. We also have special inspection, geotechnical work with BAG engineers. We also have special inspection, geotechnical work with, with bag engineers, as well as quite a bit of environmental oversight as we do on any, on any of our projects in this beautiful area in the coastal zone. So right now, we're looking at approximately 6.9, a little under $7 million of project costs. And so with this transfer, with the request to transfer for tonight, there is some, this would cover a lot of the costs that we're anticipating, and it still provides us a buffer of a little over $600,000 for any future unforeseen items that come up. Obviously, with the construction still moving forward, we still have quite a bit of work to do. And so we're not, as, as much as we don't anticipate more construction-related costs, you never know. And so we want to make sure that we have the funding available to see this thing through. And so that's where we are tonight. That's it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Maz, the Sierra Club has come out strongly against any artificial turf. Is there a possibility that we can change the design, or is it too late?
We've, we've swapped quite a bit of the artificial turf already to turf.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, that's good.
And there are, there are some seedy areas that are still considered as turf. We could consider that and see what that impact would be. I, the bigger, the bigger impact, I believe, during the time of the project preparation was the maintenance responsibility there, but we can certainly take a look and see what we can do there.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Maz.
And if I might just add, part of the decision to go with artificial turf on just those seating areas was based on our site visit to Stern Grove up in San Francisco, which was a big inspiration for this project, and meeting with their maintenance team. And the challenge of having to maintain narrow grass areas, they spend as much time trying to maintain that as massive fields. And given our small staff size on the maintenance side, we were concerned that if we went with a natural product, which again, we'll look at, but our concern is that we won't be able to maintain it to a high standard and we'll, we'll end up, you know, the, the maintenance on the park will not be good, and it'll be a deterrent for people to come and use that area. So that's, that's the thinking behind it and the concern, but we understand the concern and the big push over the last couple of years against artificial turf.
Why does it have to be turf at all? How about stone? People sitting on stone?
Like the Greek theater in Berkeley.
Right.
I mean, I mean, we, right now, the way this is designed, the turf is also, the turf also is, does stormwater treatment, so it's not adding to the impervious surface. So we could look at other materials that are also, that are pervious.
Pervious, pervious stone. Bring your own cushion.
If you want to talk about cost increase?
That, that is one, that is one potential, that there would be a cost increase from turf to that, but we, again, we can.
Let me just point out something. See, if you go to Stern Grove or any place like that, people don't actually sit on the grass or the turf anyway. They bring blankets, or they bring those little, you know, chairs that are, you know, just three or four inch, you know, people bring their own stuff anyway, so I don't see it as a big problem myself.
I think we've got pretty clear direction to explore alternatives on the, on the seating areas.
Any questions or clarify?
Maz, can you go back to the first slide with the timeline again, just for a second? Yeah, there you go. So let's see. We got the grant for 4.75 million, 2021. So, you know, sometimes I always ask myself these questions. What if we hadn't gotten that grant? What would have happened?
Yeah, this, this project, if, without that grant funding, unless there was another source of funding, we would not be moving forward at that time.
So did any, was it ever, see, I think, I feel in these types of construction contracts, there's always these cost overruns. It just always is. So when the planning was done back two years ago, how much originally did you set aside for contingencies of that 4.75 million in the planning? What, I mean, what did that look like?
In the original planning, when we considered all the other costs, we had set aside 15%, so about $750,000.
I mean, did, did anyone think of maybe having a less ambitious project and setting aside more? Did that come up in conversations? Because, yeah, I'm kind of concerned about. We've had a number of, we've had a number of cost overruns on projects, you know, corporate yard, the fence, a million bucks there. So it concerns me that we didn't set aside more of a reserve fund in a project, you know, of this nature in a flood zone. And, yeah, maybe it could have been a less ambitious project. And I know, I'm not trying to second, I guess I am doing a little bit of second guessing, yeah. So, but for future projects, we got to really think about that, setting aside, get a huge grant like that. It's an opportunity to really prepare for these kind of situations.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's a, it's a good point. I think when, you know, when this project came to, to my lap, that is, that's generally one of the, one of the things I always look at is the value engineering. Are there areas, not just for the construction cost itself, but also looking at opportunities to do things where it may lessen the load on maintenance staff, for example? And again, it's all about the, the bottom line. So we did, we did do some of that. I think the other, the other part is, I don't know if the funding would have been available to the level that it was if it, if we had a scaled-back project. So there's, I think you can look at it in both ways, in a sense. But yeah, I, you know, the impacts and the delays that we've had on this project were not anticipated. And if we had any inclination that this was going to be the way that we went down, I think there's a lot of things I think we can second guess and redo that I would have redone in different ways. It's just unfortunately where we are today and how this has transpired, we really have to look at how we can finish it and move forward, just because of this, the fact that the project's in the middle of construction. We could look at other areas and do some additional value engineering if possible. It's just at this stage, I think we've gotten so far that it's going to be tough to really get any savings back from the contractor.
Well, you know, we'll have to take the money from other, you know, CIPs. We talked about that, so there is a consequence, you know, as well. So, okay, thanks. Appreciate your candor on that.
I was going to say, the big problem was the access easement. You know, city council a long time ago didn't provide for an access easement to public property. And that was a biggie. That was a big failure, which, you know, we didn't know about because documentation at the time was lousy, right? So that's, yeah. I just want to just point out, though, that that Prop 68 money was, was not a lot of money that went to the agencies. A lot of it was subject to very specific earmarks on two really huge statewide projects. The fact that we got any Prop 68 money at all was totally amazing. And Assembly Member Berman, you know, worked real magic to get that money. So, you know, we got to spend it. We got to do a nice park because that was a real, you know, gift from on high that we pulled that off.
I agree. I think it was a miracle. I'm just sorry we burned through that miracle so quickly because of all these other issues that came up.
Any other comments? No? So we need to do a, a motion?
I don't think we called for a public comment, did we?
No. But, public comment?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, this is Kimberly.
I'm sorry, I didn't fill out, I'm Joan Winters. Oh, I'm sorry.
Should I wait?
No, go ahead. Kimberly, hold on one second, please.
It's fine, I'll just.
Okay, go ahead, Kimberly.
This is Kimberly Williams, and I'm speaking as a, as a coastside resident. This is a very interesting project, and I tried to look at the plans on the website. I just had a question about the lighting. Before I go to the lighting, I'm a little surprised that there are so many impermeable surfaces and echo the concerns that others have expressed about synthetic turf. But I also had a question about the lighting because on the unincorporated areas, we've had a lot of discussions about dark skies compliant lighting to avoid light pollution on the coast side, and I wonder if that was also employed in the plans for this park? And if not, is it something we could still look at at this stage? Thank you.
Thanks, Kimberly.
Joan Winters, I have a question regarding cost overruns, and if that's been happening more than once, do you have a practice at the City of Hafman Bay of doing lessons learned at the end of major projects?
That's a practice that I have on every project I work on regardless of my time with Hafman Bay, but we, yeah, we routinely will look at our projects and look at lessons learned and make sure we apply those in future projects.
Do you circulate that at city council and other city staff? And is it done at higher levels?
We definitely have conversations at the department head level, and we do discuss it internally quite a bit, but I don't know if we, yeah, I don't think we've done anything formally, but we definitely have conversations about lessons learned.
That's my suggestion to develop that. And I just want to say, years ago, I went to a Shakespeare in the Park at this park, and I really enjoyed it. So I hope it improves and continues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to make a comment on the previous?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I will say that as far as the dark skies policy, that was absolutely part of the review process. And the lighting that we are, that is being proposed, actually isn't part of this current phase. A lot of the lighting and audio visual will be a future phase, but the coastal development permit does have that. I did look at that as far as that, that policy, and the lighting is really going to be for events specifically. This isn't something that's going to be constantly on and lit 24/7. So it's really going to be use-based, and we did follow those guidelines closely when we were looking at this, at the coastal development permit stage.
Thank you. Any more comments? No? Are we ready to make a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of $1,250,000 to capital improvements project number 0611, John L. Carter Park Improvement Project.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryabek?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move on to our future items of discussion? No, none? City council reports? None? Meeting adjourned?
Nice job. Interesting.
This is a reasonable time.
Yes. Yeah, I was thinking 10:15, I got, look at this. Missed by one minute.